Okay, good evening, everyone. It's five o'clock, Monday, August the twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five. I'd like to call to order our monthly work session. We welcome everyone that's here and those who are listening in. At this time, let us stand for our invocation and our pledge of allegiance. Gracious and eternal God, the maker of all things and the true righteous judge of all men. Father, we come here this evening with thanksgiving in our heart, asking for your guidance and your protection. Help us to fall away from self and totally lean to thee. Help us to do what's right for the city of Pickens, that we will be able to look in the annals of history and it has shown that we tried our best during this given time. Father, I thank you for all that's assembled here. Bind us together as a council, as staff, that we will be a truly unified force in bringing forth greatness in this area. In the name of Jesus, we pray, amen. Now for our pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, alright, thank you. I have no comments at this time. Let's go to the administrator's report.
That was quick. I don't even have a minute to think. During our, uh, public comment time at recent meetings, we've had several references to a petition regarding a proposed annexation. Council asked that, uh, I look into the petition and see what we know about it. The answer is very little. Donna O'Nar Clark also reached out to the Elections Commission. I can tell you that the city of Pickens has not received one signature on a petition, much less fourteen hundred. No petition has been submitted to the county. So if there is a petition, I know that council is interested in reviewing and understanding what that petition might call for, because I don't even know what it says, if there is one. So we just need to get, there's a process for that, and it would be to submit it to both the city and the, um, Election Commission for verification of the signatures. So just as we stand right now, fourteen hundred signatures, one signature, there's nothing verified as far as an existing petition. Moving on from that, uh, Trey Adams and his capable crew, we've, uh, finally solved the persistent problem down on Main Street in the amphitheater, where we had some issues related to, um, both, uh, prior issue was a grease clog. Um, and we thought that was the root of everything, but we did go over there and investigate last week and found a crushed sewer lateral line from the El Agave Restaurant, uh, that was seeping liquid sewage, uh, through the dirt and in, directly into the storm catch basin. Thankfully, they jumped on that very quickly, opened the street and the sidewalk, and we did what is called a trenchless repair, um, where they actually pulled a pipe, uh, through to the El Agave building and connected it to the sewer main in the street. So I'm pleased to say that El Agave's restrooms are now back in service and, um, Guacamole is safe for everyone in Pickens. We were very pleased to work with the, both the building owners and the, the restaurant folks. Uh, there was some concern that we might have to shut the place down until we got it fixed, but we fixed it very quickly and, uh, they were a pleasure to work with. So we appreciate them understanding the need to inconvenience their business for several days over the weekend. Along that lines, uh, just want to say that our codes compliance, uh, team, which we talked about, uh, at our last meeting two weeks ago, has been with us for roughly two weeks. And that is Tyler Epps and, and Matt Chapel. They have really hit the ground running. I think that mostly the community's had a positive response, and that was our intent, uh, to us reaching out to lots of people and pointing out, um, both property maintenance issues, uh, as far as grass cutting and, uh, basically the condition some property is in, uh, abandoned property that needs to be secured. Uh, these are things that we have been trying, uh, to work on, but been frankly, very spotty. But now we are doing it on a consistent basis. Lots of letters have gone out on the revenue side based on, uh, delinquent, uh, business license and hospitality tax. So these guys are really getting after it, been pleased with how it's started. And, uh, we expect to continue that as they, uh, begin their work more in the, uh, stormwater area, which we'll be considering an update to our stormwater ordinance. And the state tells us that we have lots of room, uh, to improve the way we're handling stormwater. I think our residents and our businesses tell us that on a consistent basis. So, uh, I'll be pleased when we move more into that area as well. Certainly can't complete this report this evening without talking about our water meter, uh, replacement program, which has had some issues. Uh, about twenty-five percent of our customers were impacted, uh, by erroneous bills that went out. We tried to, to jump into action and, uh, make sure that we reverse those to the minimum, uh, for those accounts. Because as we work through these issues, and they're very complex systems, we've got, and for the next year and a half or so, we're operating a new system, which requires a new method of reading these meters remotely. It requires different calculations in the billing system. We're still operating the old system, which had its own issues that we were still trying to diagnose on an ongoing basis. So, um, the important thing is that we're working the problem. We've found several elements of this many-step process that involves software, hardware, and a number of different vendors, um, and our internal staff. So we don't have a complete synopsis of who did what to whom and, and what dollars are involved, but here is the commitment is that we're going to err on the side of making sure this doesn't impact our residential and commercial water customers. That means we need to get it fixed as quickly as we can, because when we do resume billing that twenty-five percent of our customers for consumption, uh, we want to make sure, doubly sure, that that's absolutely verifiable and accurate. Uh, we should have more, uh, the vendors from Master Meter and Consolidated Pipe. Uh, we're here last week, they're going to be here this week. We're also dealing with Harris Local Government Software, which does the actual pulling in of the data. Um, and they've been working to try to accommodate these two different systems simultaneously. So it's basically all hands on deck as we try to get that straight. But again, we're just going to try to make sure that we err on the side of only charging those who potentially might be impacted, um, the minimum on those bills. So that concludes my report for this evening. We have a big agenda, so don't want to take up a lot of time.
Thank you so much for your consideration. Alright, our financial director's report.
I know you all have, um, a ton of information from me, so I know it's a lot to digest. I do want to, though, please note that the year-end is looking like it will be less than one percent difference from what our actual budget was, so that is, that's huge. It's good news. I think we have maybe two more large accruals to do. And once that is complete, we have a, like, a few, um, a few more revenues due in from the state. And once that is completed, we'll finish up the year and close out. Does anybody have any questions for me?
Hey, Mandy, uh, you've got a second. I noticed in your comments, um, that in October of this year, the CD for TD Bank will mature. And I believe the thought is that we should move that money into the LGIP account, because it will get a better return, I believe. Wanted to know if we should, if council should consider going ahead and approving, moving that money into that account now, rather than waiting until October, um, since we know that's what we're going to do with it. What are your thoughts on that?
Um, it would definitely have a better rate at the LGIP. I think the thought, though, was to keep some of the funds segregated.
So it's already matured?
No, it matures October twenty-seventh.
Okay, so I guess that's why we couldn't take it out. So it hasn't matured yet?
No, it hasn't matured yet, but the thought was to go ahead and make a decision now, if we know we're going to move it anyways.
That would be...
I can understand that, but I would think that'd be the assumption that the interest rates would be different. I mean, it, it might be higher, then it might be lower, we don't know yet.
The, the TD account, you're saying you could, it could be higher than the, than the...
I'm talking about the CD account that we're at the end right now. So you're assuming that it's going to be lower. It could be higher in October. We don't know.
It, well, it's, it's presently lower.
Well, I know.
Yeah, and I'm assuming that it'll be, continue to be about the same spread.
Alright, so I'm, I'm, I don't see a reason why to make a decision like that, why not? Because it doesn't mature in October anyway.
No, we don't have to make a decision.
We can't make a decision.
Okay, okay, right, yeah, but I mean...
We can't vote, I'm sorry, we can't vote on it if it hadn't been put on the agenda.
Of course not. I knew that.
Okay, you're testing me, thank you. But, um, I had to get confirmation, I had, it, um, the attorney help me out too. I thought that's what it was, but we can't make any kind of voting. Oh, this, this is the time to get our agenda together to vote. So that would be one of the things that we can bring to the table on our regular session. Is that okay?
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, so we can just...
We're just trying to be efficient.
You're trying to say, well, who does the agenda? Council does the agenda, because you tell me what to be done there and we can go forward that way. So that would be one of the items we definitely put on.
And also, also, when we purchased the land, the remainder of that money, which was going to go into the general fund, why don't we put the rest of that also in, into the...
Which land was that? Right here on one seventy-eight?
Yes.
Okay.
So when we purchase that land, there's going to be X amount of money left, you know, fifty, fifty thousand or more left.
That CD will, um, mature Thursday, let's say Thursday.
Sorry, you're talking about the purchase or sales?
We're purchasing land, right?
We did purchase the land.
We did it, and it's, we're paying for it. No, you're right, you're right. What am I thinking?
I think you're talking about the Pickens savings and loan CD that matures this week. Yeah, so that money is to go in the general fund to reimburse for that purchase.
Right, so I was thinking about moving as much as we can of that money also in there.
So that would be part of the decision we make in our next regular session.
I don't want it to just be absorbed in the general fund.
So we will have discussion?
Yes, yes, especially before, but I think that's the time to... We're going to vote on it and decide that's what happens.
To vote on, to vote on moving it out of the CD, or to move, or to vote on reimbursing?
Once it comes out.
Well, it's coming out this week, she said.
It's coming out this week.
Alright.
And we have to direct staff what to do with the money, that's...
Right.
Also, there's the request for sponsorship from the Pickens Blue Flame Booster Club, so I'll need to know if you guys want to do that or not.
I have a question before that, if you don't mind, because it's, I'm trying to follow this lengthy packet. Can we get an update on the FEMA reimbursement? It's an estimate, we're expecting a hundred and nine thousand?
Yes, yes.
And then...
Do we have any other updates?
We have submitted two other projects, um, one was the emergency protective measures, which was roughly a little over a hundred thousand, and then we got, um, uh, sewer line repair, which was all about five or six thousand. The, we're anticipating a hundred percent reimbursement on those, so I have no idea when, though, but, um, all that paperwork has been submitted.
Thank you.
So, thumbs up, success on that, great.
Mr. Mayor, while, while Ellie is thinking a little more, let me ask Mandy another question on the, uh, on your, on your report for the, um, local government investment pool. Just, I'm just trying to clarify just what I'm looking at. So, um, on the report, and this is the one I'm looking at here, so, yeah, same one. So the, the, the description of reinvestment, what does that actually mean? What is rein, what is rein, I see a dollar amount, but what's the reinvestment referred to? Where's that coming from?
That's where they're, um...
Reinvesting the proceeds from the corpus. They reinvest the income.
From?
From the investment.
Okay.
We don't draw down the revenue, we direct it right back into...
It goes back in, yeah.
Correct, but that's just an interest payment, right? That's just the interest accrued? Is that what, that's what the...
Correct, there's, there's two different ways that could be handled. You could either draw as a, as an ongoing payment, the revenues, and keep your corpus the same, we just add it.
Okay, well, I'm just curious, because there's, so we have reinvestment, and then there's the line item that says deposit, that was done in April. What was that money for? That was a deposit we had to put in?
That was the...
Okay, and then at the bottom where it says month-to-date and year-to-date, and it says interest earned, what do those numbers represent?
So the April deposit was an additional deposit that we added to
Right.
the fund, and the rest of this is where they're reinvesting the proceeds.
Proceeds of what?
Of the interest earned.
Our interest earned. Okay, so why, what are the numbers at the bottom? That says funds received, you know, year-to-date, month-to-date, what do, what do those numbers represent? Right, right here.
I would assume this would be the additional.
So, so month-to-date from August one through August fifteenth, is that what we're saying? That's what that is?
Yes.
And then the year-to-date is from July first? Is the year-to-date is our, is our fiscal year, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. That makes sense to me, thank you.
Can, can I, just real quick? Page ten of twenty-four to twenty-five, I, I just want to make sure that, and I'll talk to you obviously, the number says seventeen, Skip Grant Fund. So last year, is that, we got skip, we put in revenue two million eight thousand dollars in Skip Grant Funds?
Yes, that's, yeah, that's revenue reimbursed to us for the Skip Grant.
Okay. Is there any other grant funds that were part of our revenue?
No.
Part of our revenue, I'm sorry.
Um, yes, there were special grant funds that were received throughout the year.
Not a lot, I, I saw some of them in there, but...
Yeah, no, not that substantial, not, not like the Skip Grant.
One more question for me, I apologize. The, uh, on page one of the year, of last year's year-ending, June thirtieth, page one of that report, under utility fund transfer, it's about halfway, it'll pass halfway down and where we, we... So that money goes, there's five hundred ninety-one thousand that goes into our general fund from the utility fund, is that correct?
Correct, yes.
So who makes that decision, when and how to, is that already in the...
So that's, um, part of the budget, it's, um, listed in the budget lines when we approve that every year.
Okay, okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, good question.
Page, page one again, I mean, are you okay?
Uh-huh.
So who makes the approval to set up the new accounts? I mean, you see that, I, I notice that you got that, uh, numbered, the SMURF insurance claims? I mean, so you have a...
So that's not a new account, that account just has not been used in the past. It's always been in our chart of accounts, but we had so many insurance claims, reimbursements this past year, that's why it looks visible to you now.
Okay.
But the, the account has always been set up.
Okay. Is, is there any way, when you print out a report, you can do away with, like, the year-to-date column? Because it seems to just, it matches the current period.
It does, it's customizable, you could change the current period to another date, another specified date.
Yeah, yeah, I think through the year would be good, wouldn't mean to be worth having that, but...
Yeah, I can take it off.
Yeah, that'd be, you know, anyway, that's not a big deal, it's just...
Okay.
Alright, I, I, I can come to you with all my other...
Does council have any direction on the Blue Flame Booster Club?
Can, can you restate what amount we budgeted for, um, like the line item that this would be coming out of? What was that amount that was budgeted? I looked at it earlier, but I want to make sure I have it right.
We have money set aside...
So last fiscal year was, I'm sorry, eight thousand, let me look and see what we got for...
Mandy, we have money set aside for the...
We do, yes, I think it is eight thousand, if you'll give me one second.
I had ten to you in my head, but I...
It might be. Sponsorships and donations, no, I have fourteen thousand for this fiscal year. And they have a one thousand, two thousand, a two fifty, and a five hundred.
I mean, I guess the, the thing that I was thinking is, we want, I would like to support the Booster Club, um, in some capacity, but their packages are a little bit irrelevant, because it's not as though we're going to be able to divide up football tickets between all of the city employees or anything like that. So I think it, it more comes down to the amount that we'd like to contribute versus the package itself, so to say. The advertising's going to be great, but...
Listen, I, I'd say two thousand, but that was just my, my thought, this is our...
What did we do in the past?
A thousand.
Thousand, that's what we always do?
Yeah, okay, every year, okay.
And then how did, in the past, how did we allocate out the, the sports passes and the parking...
Just came, whoever wanted to... Kids, whatever, whoever wanted to go to the game. I thought that was the fairest thing to do, because it's just not enough to...
Right.
To try to get into staff, like you said, and maybe some staff could use some parking passes or whatever.
Yeah, or keep them here at City Hall and let them be rotated for employees that are attending things. But they need to be returned so that they can be used for the next one by somebody else. So I, I was going to recommend that we sponsor, um, the Pickens Blue Flame Booster Club a thousand dollars as a Blue Flame partner. Does that need to be in form of motion?
Is it on the agenda?
This can be done one of two ways, this is budgeted funds, it's within discretion of council. If there's consensus, and we have for the record, that you want to support at a certain level. If there's any debate, we need to put it on an agenda and have an actual, at the next scheduled meeting, which is not that hard.
I'm willing to go two thousand, but anything less is fine, so I don't need to discuss it, I'm, I'm willing to support it anyway. So what do you guys like to do?
Who makes that decision? Well, these are for home games anyways, right?
Yes, yeah. As far as the tickets or parking pass.
I'm just talking about signs and such, yeah, which doesn't matter to me.
So we don't have to vote on the, I mean, on the amount, I'm sorry, the line item which we're using. We can just ask administrative, I'm not administrative, but our finance director to give the thousand dollars, if everybody's in agreement with that.
And that was the analysis voting for?
Uh, well, there's a line item for fourteen thousand for sponsorships and donations of, of, yeah, council choosing.
Is there any, just send a vote to have a debate, if so, we agree on the agenda, but they...
In fact, Mr. Mayor, I think in the past, these have, um, rarely, um, come to council. These have been more kind of the finance committee, and we're just making an effort to involve council in all of these more granular decisions. There's been an expression of interest in that, so it's, but yes, it, it is in the budget, so if there's consensus, it's just direction to the record.
Thank you.
Good to meet you. Thousand dollars, thousand dollars.
Maybe we put the, um, the passes up for a weekly lottery, who gets to use them from employees? Employees. I take it, that's all it is. Tim can't wait to have something else to do.
Call, um, Tim. He'll get you your pass. Okay, thank you so much, man. Now, number six, further discussion regarding ordinance number twenty-two-five-seven, to amend chapter eighteen, article four, to add section one, I'm sorry, section four-one-four concerning planned development district of the official zoning ordinance. Has everybody had a chance to look that over as you give somewhat of an explanation? Jennifer, come on up and talk to us in a nutshell, summation. What does section one-four-one-four do?
Um, it has to do with, uh, I'm sorry, I just went blank. A planned development district for future, any kind of development, residential, commercial, so we can have, I don't want to say compromises, but conversations with the developer with, to bring in the zoning ordinance and be able to do different things. Daniel may be able to help me a little bit better with language than, but, um, because I, uh, it's for future development, it could be for any kind of major residential, there was one other we did, multifamily too, I forgot about that one. And it's...
Yeah, so I, to summarize, after, uh, Jennifer, the first, you had first reading already, and I made some revisions to the ordinance after first reading, so I took the good work Jennifer did, and, and I tried to streamline it a little bit. I also took into account some of the comments that council had at the, at the first reading. And so, I'll just summarize briefly. The, the first section four, fourteen point one defines the purpose of the planned development district, which is fairly self-explanatory, uh, to council, but you are generating a lot of control with this zoning classification. And so we are giving council a wide discretion on what to allow within a, a application for a planned development. I want to, also, I added in, I wanted to go back, so under four-fourteen point one point one A, I did add a provision in that last sentence, which in addition to the, all the requirements of this zoning district, a PD can also be subject to a development agreement, if the city desires the developer to enter into one. It's not mandatory, but it is an option for the city. So in addition to all the requirements of the zoning district, if council wanted to exercise, exercise even more control or has specific requirements of the developer, or the developer may be asking the city to do things, uh, on its behalf, those would all be set forth in a development agreement. So it can be part of the PD zoning and be, the zoning can be subject to a development agreement. The next section, or four-fourteen, uh, three, I just want to kind of outline the approval procedure, which is important. So there's a pre-application conference that's done really at the direction of our planning director, and she can invite planning staff into that meeting along with the developer, at which point they submit a, a concept plan. And the concept plan is defined under four-fourteen A, and that sets forth, that's items one through fourteen, everything the developer... And that sets forth, that's items one through fourteen, everything the developer has to initially present to the planning director and whatever staff's involved, this is our idea for the development, this is what we want to do. So you have a very good idea of what the PD is going to look like, what the developer intends to do with the property. At which point, under the procedure, they submit a, a planned development application and a preliminary development plan. The previous version of the zoning ordinance had a, uh, land use plan plus a development plan. I have combined those two items into one, which we're going to call the preliminary development plan. That's what planning commission reviews, and that's what this council is going to review, and if it meets your approval, to approve. And we'll go through all those, uh, line items in a, in a minute. In addition to that, there's a statement of intent that the developer must present. The statement of intent, as well as any restrictive covenants, are filed with the registered deeds office in Pickens County, if approved by council. So what you're doing is, as a matter of public record, you are establishing that these are the uses and, uh, allowed in this planned development, and they cannot be deviated, deviated from. So once you sign off on and approve it, it's set in stone. And there's another section on deviations from the PD, and all deviations must be made by this, approved by this council. I gathered from the last meeting that you did not want to differentiate between minor and major changes, that you wanted to sign off on all changes, so that change has been made in the current version before you. If there's a change to the PD, this has to come before this council. Yeah. So after, uh, the statement of intent, which sets forth a number of items, I have to present the statement of intent. There is, the procedure next goes to a public hearing before planning commission. And that public hearing will follow the typical public hearings that all the planning commission has for any zoning change. And then it comes before, uh, this council, which will either approve, approve with modification, or disapprove. So you will have the opportunity to say yes, no, or yes with these following conditions. At which point, after that preliminary development plan is approved, then the developer has permission to submit a final development plan. And that is the development plan that the developer and this property is going to be governed by. Four-fourteen, four B, uh, preliminary plan requirements, you will see the litany of requirements that the developer must meet in order to submit a preliminary plan, so it's very detailed. And the planning director will be in charge of making sure the developer meets all of these requirements when submitting the preliminary plan to the city. And then finally, there are additional standards that are tacked on to the back under four-fourteen-six, the planned development standards, those are additional standards a developer must meet, including some minimum acreage requirements, types of development, you can go into minimum acreage and open amenity space, all those things, density are set forth in those standards.
Can I ask a question really quickly on that? Who, where did these minimum acreage sizes come from? Was, is that just a, this is what's typically been seen and done?
I was gonna ask that same question.
Yeah.
Yeah, you, that, the, I took, Jennifer suggested these, these certainly can be explored further by council and amended.
We've had developments in our city that built, I mean, we, I would really like the city to control any development from this point on, after we pass this, so that if any developer comes into the city and wants to develop two acre, three acre, four acre, whatever, put a bunch of homes on there, the council is, is going to be in charge of what's going on there.
Well, this is specific to a PD, so that. But that, that they wanted a, an R fifteen or whatever, I mean, that would be a different zoning district.
They'd have to request to be PD.
Wouldn't necessarily fall within the PD.
They're not PD, okay.
They would have to request it every time.
So how do, is there a way that we can request? I mean, there, there have been several neighbors that I can think of right now that, and there's another one that I spoke to somebody that they very well could be developing a five acre plot, that I don't think anyone on this council would want.
Well, that's through your zoning, zoning regs and your land development regulations. So you, you know, you have an option to amend those if you believe this council believes those need to be amended, but that's separate from the PD. It could be separate, I mean, this only applicable to PD zoning applications.
Present, presently, Jennifer, if somebody has a three acre parcel that is zoned R twelve, they can by right develop under R twelve standards without doing a planned development.
There's a twelve thousand square foot lots, they need to set that. But we do have land development regulations too, so if we get, we can determine if it's a major or a minor or exempt, and they've got to follow those as well, so, but this would be, they would have to ask for this.
So is that a, is that a big, another discussion that we need to have another day? Because I'd really like a council to discuss how we, and, and maybe I'm just, I've not been made with this area of the law, okay? But I, I admit I'm not.
Can I make a suggestion as far as what we have here as far as the PD? I think it's put together well, if you want to change the acreage of little minor things, you can do that. But let's take care of that, and then we will put on the agenda if it's okay for all other, uh, zone in, in, in the, uh, city limits, how's that sound? And then we could really look at that and have something similar to this, but it would be on a smaller scale. If they want to do two acres or three acres or whatever they need.
But like the housing district behind the penalty district extension and so on, I think council should have been involved in that, I would have very much liked that. And I, I think we should be involved in whatever goes up in our small city from now on.
Yeah, that's nothing wrong with that, nothing wrong with that, that's showing responsibility.
So, we can put that on the agenda and talk about.
Could we do it for the next work session?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, you got that done?
Mr. Mayor, my thoughts on asking about the minimum required acres, um, I, I guess I'll start here, with the industrial, I mean, ten acres seems like quite a lot for an industrial planned development. I don't, in my mind, maybe I could be convinced otherwise, but, and then I also think that three acres seems too little for a residential planned development. I would like to see the residential be a five acre minimum lot size, um, to protect what we're trying to protect with how we will look in the future. And, and then I think that the industrial, in my opinion, is too large. If I wanted to request a PD for an industrial plan that I have, I would think that I would be shopping in the five to seven, eight acre range, if that makes sense to everyone. So my suggestion would be to bump residential up to five acre minimum requirement. And I know this sounds crazy to everyone, but it makes sense if you think about it, move industrial down a little bit. There's also not a lot of ten acre plots that someone could.
That's what I was getting ready to suggest, was if you would like me to look and see what's out there, and see what acreage wise there is. But you are right, I don't think there's.
There's not, like, there's nothing. Yeah, I know that, so, um, it's just food for thought, I'm open to conversation and dialogue about it, cause I, but I, um.
In your research, are there, I believe there are some of these that, um, don't distinguish different categories. They have a four or five acre for.
In general.
Yeah, just in general, for any planned development, and then it inherits, based on.
The one I helped in, in Central, was very general, it was like five acres total for anything.
Because the five acres does work better when you have a mixed-use.
Yeah.
Development that doesn't fall into one category.
Absolutely.
Yes.
So that, that may be an alteration, but we want to come up with just a, um, a use agnostic, five acres.
So. You kind of just coined a term.
I liked it.
I'm gonna write that down.
That's pretty goddamn good.
Yeah, okay.
How would, how would you all feel about adjusting residential to a minimum five acre?
I was asking attorney, would, if he think there was any impact?
I think, I think that's, that's a fine amendment. I think we can, in the next couple of weeks, or whenever, before we take this up for second reading, we can, uh, we can double check that with other communities and see if, if that's presented any issues for anybody else, but I don't see any objection to it.
Let me, Mr. Mayor, I want to just, the way this says minimum period required, so if I have two acres residential land, I can't get a PD, even if I want it.
Correct.
Is that correct?
You would have to follow the zoning that you currently have, or apply for variance, but it wouldn't, and two acres, I don't think it would be relevant.
So, tell me here, what, what is the concern about the acreage issue? I mean, i- i- if we have, if we have a concern, why don't we just make it zero, just everybody? If you want a PD, it doesn't matter what the acreage is.
I think it, for me, the concern is that the future of how we want the town to look, if anyone that has a two acre tract of land that wants to apply for a PD and then build multiple residential homes on it, it could end up looking like a block of apartments, or, or just on top of each other homes. So in my opinion, I wanted to see larger for residential, because then we're not looking at, if you think about the cost for developing a two acre tract of land, the infrastructure cost that would go into that, and then take into consideration what five acres would look like, you're gonna get much more serious, much more open to development agreement type builders and developers, in my opinion. So I think.
Mr. Mayor, I, sorry. I thought you were done, sorry.
Well, does that.
I, I, I'm, I'm just, it, it, it's a zoning classification, and you can choose it or you don't choose it. There's not, you're not slotted into the PD if you, if it's already zoned something else.
Right, I think, um, the option that someone would apply for the PD, in my opinion, would be because they don't like what they're currently looking at with their land.
And you think they could get more of something?
Potentially.
Through a PD, you know, that PD has to be approved by this council and can't be anything other than what we want it to be?
Potentially.
Okay, well, if.
It won't always be this council.
No, I understand, but this, we're, we're changing this right now, we're adding something right now. I mean, any council can come back and say, we don't like, we're gonna just do it differently, so, I mean, I, I don't, I'm not against anything you've said. I'm just wanting to understand.
Yeah, absolutely.
Are we, what are we trying to accomplish there? Um, and is, and is changing the acreage really going to accomplish that?
I think it would have made a big difference in some of our surrounding municipalities had they had this.
Right, I mean, there's always, well, because what we're concerned about is density, is the bottom line.
My concern is, yeah.
Okay, alright. There may be a better way to.
And for Jennifer, to this point, are we familiar with any examples where it's based on number of units instead of the acreage? Where if it's two or more, maybe we can look to see if that, cause I think that that kind of focuses in on a council is more not just somebody who's building a house, but somebody who's building two or three houses. Um, maybe that's something we can look at and see if.
We, we could, and another approach, I mean, if you, you know, the purpose of the planned development is, is, you, you have a number of, variety of structures within this development, with open space and amenities and things like that, so. And I think that goes to the minimum acreage standpoint, you know, you don't get to a PD if you've just got an acre lot. It just doesn't work.
You don't have the room.
You don't have the room.
Right.
So if we want to accomplish the PD, Miss Winter's point, you know, you want, you want, you're, you're thinking about a larger space, and this is how we want this kind of gateway to the city, or wherever it is to look. And so it don't, it only works if you have a certain size piece of property.
So, so really, the, the acreage doesn't matter, the minimum acreage doesn't matter. If I'm a developer, and I'm coming to you, and I'm saying, oh, well, I don't want to do that because I've only got three acres, so I don't want to mess with all that. I'm just gonna use the, the, the current zoning, I'm gonna pick a zoning that just lets me go in and do what I want to do. I'm just, I don't want to make this more complicated by getting in, you know, the, the minimum acreage size is fine, but I'm just kind of, if I'm a developer, why would I say, why would I be concerned about the, about the acreage issue? My concern is about number of units, and I think that's a better approach, but that's, that's just me. Cause I, I, I don't, I don't, if I have, if I have fifty acres, I, I might be able to do more with a PD than I can with straight zoning, but I don't know that until I look at it. It depends on the property, we've, we've seen that, so I'm just not sure why we, what, where did these acreages come from?
They were just other ones that I've looked in other towns.
And they, and they thought it was significant?
Except for Central, like I said, I think they're general, they're just like you were saying, the.
Five acres.
Right, just, right.
And I think, like, the flip side of the thought train that I think that you're taking with it, if you think about an industrial development, somebody wanting to come to apply for a PD for an industrial purpose, why would you need ten acres to apply for that? You should, like, if we leave that as the minimum there, I think that should be more like five acres.
Well, I'm not sure how many industrial buildings you can get on five acres.
Minimum.
Yeah, no, I, I, I mean, it's depending what you're building and how it's.
It depends, yeah, at this point, I think industry would be great regardless.
We, I think we need to look at it very carefully, because we want control of growth. Uh, we want to be able to control what comes in through the town of Pickens. And I think that's what we're at, and then by consensus with that, that's why we're doing this PD, right? We want to be able to control, so it doesn't turn into something that gets out of hand and what we can't handle. I just think the zoning that's for smaller tracts would be adequate, because it has to go through planning and also council. And we can dictate also, like we would do through a PD. So, so that being said, the PD, we will make it to where it's mandatory that you have to do this if you have over five acres, five or over. I, I don't want to do business with anybody that doesn't want to do this, because that's what, that's gonna give us our control. We don't want to lose that, and I, and I'll turn it real hard to make sure we have as much control as possible. Uh, I want to keep that, and I want to use it to make sure that we don't explode with growth to where we can't handle. That was my main objective about doing this and going down this road. So I don't think we need to get out of the zoning process that's already there for the smaller places. Now, larger, like you were talking about, I think it should be a requirement, they have to come by us, they have to have it.
Unless before the second reading, if anyone can come up with a really good standpoint, I would be quite happy, in my opinion, to see five acres across the board on this chart, that would be my suggestion.
Yeah, I can.
Um, Mr. Mayor, one more, so how does that fit with the requirements for open space? Doesn't the open space requirement kind of is a check to the actual density issue that you're concerned about? And so, if you're, if, as Mr. Mayor has pointed out or, or suggested that. And so if you're, if, as Mr. Mayor has pointed out or or suggested that every development should have to go through a PD process, is that what you're saying?
No, I said, every large development.
Over five acres?
Yeah, over five, five acres are over. And the ones that are smaller, they'd be subjected to zoning laws.
So if I have ten acres commercial and I want to put a grocery store there in the city, I've got to do a PD?
Hmm, no, no.
If you're in general business, you would just construct your grocery store.
But we're saying any commercial development over five acres is going to be a PD.
No, it's it it's if you chose to apply for the PD versus what you are currently zoned for.
Exactly, going back to my original point, why why would you even apply for that if you could do more with the regular zone, I don't understand how we're going to get to this, I don't, how is this going to get enforced? How are we going to make this a tool versus simply?
We act, we we got, uh we hired to help us enforce this, plus the counties are handing over all of this to the cities, they're not doing it in this county, so we're in control of the place by being handed to us.
Well.
This this is a
How is this a tool?
Innovative.
Yes.
Zone. Okay, so when developer's going to come in to the city, they may be looking at a way to develop their property that is outside the normal s- your typical zoning.
Hmm, right.
Districts, so they want to do a planned development, and so let's look at your uh where you've got a a mixed use, you've got some retail, uh commercial, you've got some residential components, open space, open area for community gather. That's where the PD comes in, they come in in a variety of areas, but you know, you it it's to help with situations where tip your typical zoning is not appropriate. That's, and if you do that, then this this zoning ordinance is going to dictate how that's going to happen.
Okay, so if I have three acres and I want a PD, but it's not the minimum, I can't do a PD?
Correct.
Is that correct?
Correct, and you have got to abide by what you're currently zoned for or apply for a variance.
Which, in point of fact, zoning has setbacks, which is kind of a um green space requirement. But for an industrial, this isn't for one firm comes in and says, I want to build my industry here, this is for an industrial park where four partners want to build industrial buildings and have a shared picnic area, or it's for multiple residentials with a a corner store.
And a park.
Right, it's not three houses on a street.
I understand.
And it may be something done in phases too.
Yeah.
Right.
So let's say you've got a larger swath of property, twenty-five acres, well, I want to develop in phase A, then phase B, then phase C. And so we want to put this in a planned development and make the zoning process more seamless for the developer, that that might be a situation where it would work.
And we and we've already addressed that in here, I mean, phases are addressed in this agreement.
Yes.
Yeah.
So if I have four acres and I develop it under some regular zoning, and then my neighbor has four acres and he wants, he's right next to me and he wants to add on. It's not a phase, he's just adding on and says, hey, I'll just extend your street. We can do that?
If it's shared zone, same district.
Well, sure, yeah, if it's the same zone, or even a different zone that still allows for some residential, if it's two residential parcels together, just. But we're not, we're not, we're not in a position where we can actually control that, we can't control that situation, is that right?
Yeah, oh, in several different ways, if you got creative.
Okay, right, right.
As part of the comprehensive plan process and the zoning ordinance is entirely within legal limits up to this council, that's a separation. That's something we need to take up as part of the comprehensive.
Which is right around the corner.
Hmm.
Any other questions?
Um, sorry, just one more, really quickly.
No problem.
Um, under B in one or four one four six fourteen with the percentage of gross land area for open amenity space?
Where are you, I'm sorry?
Page seven.
Page seven.
In the chart.
Gotcha, oh, okay, gotcha.
I would also propose seeing, um, well, sorry, so excluding lot area under single family with ten percent. When you say, can you elaborate excluding lot area would be, I think I'm seeing it the right way, but I want to make sure.
Excluding the lot, so it would not include include anything that is not a lot.
Right, right, correct, yeah, so I would also propose changing that ten percent there to fifteen percent or twenty percent.
For the single family?
And then that, that's the, those are the two changes that I noted.
Everybody good with that?
Yeah, I actually agree with Councilman Winter, that's a that's a problem.
That's awesome.
I mean, you you're saying that's the, yeah, yeah, thank you.
Any other question, anything?
This is great, thank you guys so much for getting this together.
We mean, we put this on the agenda?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll get with you, Jennifer, to finalize everything about that.
Thank you so much, yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, I can we bring Mandy up just one more minute, two more minutes?
Hmm? Oh, I appreciate so, yeah, come on back.
I mean, I wanted to step back, you know what I mean, just because we didn't get that, I didn't, I thought we were gonna deal with the first month and a half. I just want to make a comment to council and Mandy and just ask, you know, in general, I mean, we can talk specifics, but I went through this report, the revenue expenditure statement from seven one to eight one, eight fifteen. And I, e- everything that I saw that was fifty per fifty to sixty percent and more, you know what I mean, of of that percent used, and there is the budget already, you know what I mean? And I was, it just concerned me of of, in other words, the current period, I mean, now, look over page uh two. I mean, let's just go down to depreciation bonus, I mean, I'm just going some out, but you can just see, so we're at a hundred and fifty-one percent of our budget already, go down, go next, you know, anything, I I think anything close over twenty or twenty-five percent, we have a problem already, you know what I mean? And you can go down this line and you can see, I can see one, two, three, four, five, just this page, six, seven, eight, nine, you know, I I mean, nine things that we are, we're thirty percent to fifty, sixty percent of our yearly budget on these items, and I have, I went through every page and we have a bunch, you know what I mean, so I'm wondering, what are we doing wrong? You know, are we just going to be making line item adjustments to to come up with the money here? I mean, I thought we went through a budget process and we're, I mean, it's literal every page, you know what I mean? Um, and we have, we're we're spending quickly, so either each one of these were, you know, there was a plan for them to be spent really fast, you know, and I understand that some of them would be spent, you know, very quickly. Or we're, we out of problems, you know what I mean, I do I need to come to you, but I just wanted to highlight the council, we, I I see that on every page of this of our spending.
There are a lot of unforeseen, like um the PD, for example, their maintenance line. They had the plumbing issue in the bathroom and that ended up taking up their whole maintenance line, um unforeseeable, didn't know that was going to happen. Um. The uh property insurance, we pay that twice a year, so yeah, on each department's page, it looks like a good chunk is gone from that particular line item, but we pay that twice a year.
Okay.
Um.
Yeah, I figured on some of those, I read out, yeah, okay, you're right, you know, that one.
Yeah, and then there are going to be some big like things that were budgeted for, um that were ordered and just came in, that that's a one-time deal, so that expense is, you know, it is expensed out, but there won't be any more in that line item. Um, as far as other things, you know, it's you know, departments are spending up their budget.
I mean, we're in a month and a half into the huge, you know, fiscal year, I mean, wha- what is training professional development that we didn't have budgeted, but it's it's like.
For which department?
Uh, that would be page two, um for the administrators.
Um, the ten forty-one fifty sixty twenty-five?
Seventy-one.
Seventy-one.
Uh, so that that sixty seventy-one and the sixty twenty-five are actually the same. Um, just our, um, when AP was done, they were coded to the wrong account. So if you'll notice that the sixty twenty-one doesn't have a budget line, that's because it should be under the sixty twenty-five, so essentially we've spent six of that ten thousand out of the sixty twenty-five.
That's why it's a new, I I see the asterisk there, and so it shouldn't be there, you.
Right, it will be moved, yeah, I'll have to do a journal entry and move it to the correct account.
And there's also a lot of asterisks, you know what I mean, I mean, are, you know, is Mandy creating new line items or?
No, that's um, the asterisk is um a feature of Smart Fusion, it it does that automatically whenever something reaches the the actual budget.
So like the capital LA in eight eighty-fourty?
That was the purchase of the property that we will be reimbursing the general fund for, um, when that CD matures this week.
Okay, and so anyway, you can go through the next page, and you can look at them all, and you can see, I just looked at anything that was like, really, I took like forty percent and up, you know what I mean, and I thought, we are really out of control.
Wait, can you, can you reiterate what page you're on, I'm sorry, you're talking about, yeah, but two of what?
The uh new budget year, the new fiscal year.
Our current.
The revenue current.
Seven one twenty-five.
Yeah.
Page two.
Seven one twenty-five.
I don't see an asterisk.
Right here. Very.
Could have an asterisk.
That's.
Yeah, any asterisk, those are new accounts that we didn't, line items that we didn't budget, but she told us where that came from, because it's generally wrong. Account, so anyway, I I. It it's a
That's payable.
There's two of them on there.
Sorry, I know, I'm, it's my fault, I'm just trying to catch up.
Yeah, it's a, it's a lot.
This is twenty-four.
Okay, that's what I missed.
So. I know some of these, I understand what they are, but you want to tell them, I I've just given Ken's council a heads up that I just went through every page and, you know what I mean?
Yeah, and you can come by, any of you can come by the office at any time, and we can do um a detailed inquiry on any of these account lines, and you can look, see, you know, what those expenditures are from.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Wanted to highlight it in a meeting, that we, I think we're just spend lots, you know what I mean, so, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, uh on Friday, I'm meeting with finance staff, um, we're still working on year end, which means there will be accruals and that number will go up and down. Um, generally, we're right at where we were on overall budget for the prior budget year, um, but we do see the internal swings. So this having been the first budget that the finance director and the administrator worked on and kind of within our control, we're pleased that we're within one percent and may end up being under or just over. Uh, but we're going to dig more deeply into it and look at kind of a post-game review, what did we control well, what do we need to control better, where were our um issues where we might want to um shift things around in our discussions about budget next year? Um, and what I might suggest is that it's been helpful for me to go through that process with Mandy, and and maybe we schedule a specific work session um quarterly where we can go through our budget performance instead of just getting a bunch of pieces of paper, which we all have questions about, we could sit down and march through it, if you think that might be advisable.
Yeah.
Yeah, because um really, that's what your responsibility is supposed to give us, according to.
That's right.
So that's a, that's part of it, and that we can do that, and I think we need to do that.
Yeah.
Also, this is a good part for the case of of having standing committee, you can have three more people working with Mandy and and our team. Uh, and you can have a hands-on, um, so it won't bring any alarms to you or to the public that we don't know what we're doing. I'm scared of that too, but I don't think that's the case, I really appreciate Mandy and all she's done and and Tim, I think they're doing a good job, but we have to look at it very closely. Also, as a council, that's our responsibility, and I I I agree with you, but let's look at that really hard and long as far as the finances and stuff on.
So Mandy's not spending money, you're just recording it, you know what I mean, so I'm not blaming this on you, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
And I'm not blaming this on Tim either, he's just recording money, he's coming and going, and and it's and it's pretty high, and I just wanted to make note with the council.
And it'd be a matter of record, so we can really look at it.
Yeah. So we'll look at it in the time.
Yeah, we'll plumb the depths and I can, I can, I promise you, it's not as scary as it looks when you.
Is everybody in agreement that we have a workshop, so a work session, and uh go over the quarter?
Can you say like, when, soon?
Quarter one will be over.
June, September thirtieth would be into the first quarter, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, I I finalized one, but you know, it's a good idea, we.
Yeah, I was hoping we'd do it right when the quarter is over, and I can just get what everybody would call a meeting, and we'll sit down and really go over it, and see where we're at. That's why I started passing out, um, the first thirty days, we're gonna present that to you, and and that's what we need to really just help out.
Okay.
That's good, I love it. All right, is any other questions, or we move further? Further discussion, thank you so much, Mandy, uh further discussion and consideration of second reading regarding the ordinance of twenty twenty-five Ash eight to amend chapter sixteen, article four, methods for controlling the introduction of pollutants and into the municipal storm sewer system by preventing illicit connections and discharges, and to amend article five stormwater management utility. That was a mouthful, Tim, would you please help us move further in this?
Yes, sir, obviously, um, the state and our city have a vested interest in protecting people's property and health through the control of uh stormwater outflows, uh everything from flooding issues to uh infrastructure being washed away. Uh, this involves regulations that govern best management practices for both new and existing uh property. Uh, it talks a lot about impervious uh areas, which are rooftops and asphalt, which shed water, and we have to be able to study and look at the water quality uh for pollutants. This is a state mandate, uh so this is an update to our existing stormwater management uh ordinance, which incorporates the latest requirements. Uh, part of the, as I mentioned during my administrator's report, the, our codes compliance effort is to provide staffing to do some of the things that, uh, and this is called an MS four uh license from the Department of Environmental Services, that we've been put on notice that our testing and our ongoing activities surrounding this are deficient. Um, that's because they haven't really been done over many years, um, so we're going to make them uh sufficient and we're going to follow state law. So that's essentially the, uh, what we have before us is, it allows for, and the attorney can speak to this if he wishes, but for minor alteration to bring it into compliance with situations in local jurisdictions, but generally, the thrust of it is, the state, the state and the federal government have set standards and we're going to uphold.
We've already had our first meeting.
In part, I'm sorry, one more thing, part of the um reason for the timing tonight is that with that notice of deficiency, we do have an agreement with DEHAC that we've been working through, and we promised them an updated ordinance by August thirty-first?
August thirtieth.
August thirtieth, which is our first uh extension that we requested. August thirtieth, which is our first, uh, extension that we requested, sir.
Our, uh, our civil engineer with Seaman Whiteside has been helping us with this, and like Tim said, this brings us into compliance with updated stormwater regulations, which we have to do on our MS four permit. So it's, it's important for council to, to move forward with these, these amended changes. We're just bringing us up to speed, uh, from a long time ago, from the last time you, you amended your stormwater ordinance, this has been a long time.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion. For a second, please.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion that we approve ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash zero eight as presented.
Second.
It's been properly moved to second, now we're ready for question.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, this, this was, um, this ordinance is written basically, uh, it's a boilerplate ordinance from the state, from DES, is that correct? Or is this unique to us, other than our names on it?
It's, it's very similar to the other jurisdictions' stormwater ordinances who have MS four permits.
Thank you.
You have a question? All in favor, raise your right hand.
I'm sorry. I'm, I'm sorry. Uh-huh. I saw page twenty-nine, I'm not sure, you know, I, I haven't been involved in one of these before, so... But, did you guys see at the bottom, and I, again, I want to hear from the administrator too, that if court proceedings are instituted, usually subject to court costs, the city administrator shall have the authority to develop guidelines and procedures with implementation of provisions of this section. Do we want, do we want, and does you want responsibility to do this? You know what I mean, or do these kind of... I, I understand maybe if we have an appeal process, you know, somebody wants to come, and since there is an appeal process all the way to the courts, I don't have a problem with it going through the administrator, because they'll just keep going if they don't like what he does, but... And I don't want every one of them coming to council. But I, I guess I'm asking, do we want council to be more involved in this? Or do we want, um, we just want to leave this the way it is? Apparently, this is the way it's read, written in most, in most municipalities?
Mr. Mayor, I would rather that God spare us rain for the rest of our lives, so I don't have to deal with this. But, um, I don't think council wants to be the, the court of force, first resort for people who have complaints about enforcement about their ditch.
I understand that.
So that, that's why it's termed that way.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I have just one other question. Regarding the fee structure, are we confident that this fee structure is sufficient enough for us as cities to be sustainable? I mean, I know we're not going to be able to cover unforeseen catastrophes, but...
Let me answer that in a nuanced way, perhaps. Um, our calculations, that is our next step, we need to get our ordinance in place. The formulas and the billing for stormwater, um, has been in place on a spreadsheet uh, that has been used by the city for a number of years. Um, it is out of date, so it is not, um, producing the revenue it should to support these activities. Uh, we do have, Seaman Whiteside has helped us to bring our, uh, plans into compliance, uh, which has been approved by the Department of, uh, Environmental Services. Our next step is to review basically how, um, individual commercial and residential properties are billed. And I think that it will be substantially different because, substant- substantially different because of the changes in both property ownership and the regulations that have been in, in place over time. But that is our next step, to examine, do essentially a rate study, um, to look at, which involves taking all of the parcels in the city, and there's a known formula that the engineers have, um, which involves having some information about the slope and, um, the impervious, uh, the amount of impervious on the site. Uh, then people actually can get deductions from their stormwater if, for instance, they replace a paved parking area with one that drains, uh, kind of an open weave with grass in it. Um, so my answer to your question is, I'm not confident that we are producing the revenue we need to, to support this activity, uh, but I believe that we will in our next budget. Um, I don't believe we will this year, because we're still going to collect, and we have budgeted for what we have traditionally billed and collected. Does that-
Yeah, that, yeah.
Fully answer it?
Okay. One, one other question, Mr. Mayor. Sixteen two one three, section... To me, it all through this article is, refers to the city engineer, so I mean, who is that? I mean, it says, "and/or such other officials, such as the city administrator." So, is this going to be our fourth one also?
No, sir, that, if in the fullness of time, the city employs a full-time engineer, it would refer to that. Um, but in all of these cases, we would have consulting engineers, and they would act as, which may be, um, kind of a cast of characters, depending on who's on call and who we've engaged for a specific purpose.
Okay, any other questions? All in favor, raise your right hand. Miss United. Took a little while there, but-
Well, I wanted, I wasn't sure if it was going to be another interruption for another ques- questions from some people.
Well, thank you so much, we're glad you got it.
I wasn't talking about you, I was talking about Daniel.
All right, further discussion regarding planning commissions. Further discussion regarding the planning commission's denial recommendation for the rezoning of two oh-six Griffin Street. Um, we've already talked about this earlier. Basically, what we're trying to get, so that we can have a first reading, is seeing whether we're going to accept the denial of this recommendation or to deny the denial. It's up to council, and I want to open the floor for any discussion towards that, as we, um...
A mo- or a motion? Do you need a motion?
No.
Okay.
So I, I, I have something I could get to this, can I, can this, Sheriff?
Yeah.
So, from my perspective, this property has a long history of business use, and sits on the edge of our central business district. The applicant is not proposing an unknown or risky enterprise, but relocating and establishing a respected local restaurant, which I think we all know what it is. The concerns about traffic and noise are solvable with reasonable conditions, but the economic and cultural benefits are significant. Uh, as council, our roles make decisions in the city's best interests based on facts and consistency, not our personal preferences or... Anyway, in my view, approving the rezoning is the right decision for Pickens. Um, so, and I believe it should be approved, I don't want to explain why real quick. This property is not new to commercial use, it is a former colonial house, a property that has historically housed a restaurant, an ice cream parlor, bed and breakfast, operations. In fact, it was previously zoned the central business district, and only later rezoned to R twelve. Proving this request would restore, not reinvent, its original character. And, second, the applicant is not proposing an unknown or risky venture, this is a successful, well-liked local restaurant. Here we want to proposably go there with the proven history of serving our community responsibly. So relocating the colonial house will bring life and activity to the edge of our central business district, increasing foot traffic and benefiting surrounding businesses. This is exactly some kind of economic vitality our town needs. There are concerns about traffic and parking and noise are valid, but they are solvable. The applicant has expressed willingness to meet all parking requirements, pursue shared parking agreements, and manage deliveries during off-peak hours. Um, restaurant hours can also be set to respect neighborhood peace, and this restaurant is typically not used, not open, you know, all hours of the day or night. Fourth, compatible with surrounding areas. Compatibility has been questioned, let's be clear, this property directly faces the back of Main Street businesses and is adjacent to other commercial uses, it's a natural transition property between residential and commercial zones. So short-term rentals will maintain a residential feel, while the restaurant adds community value and economic return. Fifth, we must ensure our decision making is based on consistent objectives. Zoning principles, if we have approved similar rezonings in comparable situations, we should apply the same standard here. So denying the request because of any other reason undermines public trust. Lastly, this plaza offers tangible benefits to Pickens, increase the business tax revenue, more visitors drawn to downtown, and we're already, uh, including me, you know what I mean? Um, actively involved in that restaurant, you know, and customers at that restaurant. So preservation of productive use of a historic property and expanded dining options for residents and tourists alike. So, um, council has the authority to overrule the planning commission when it is in the best interest of the city, and in this case, the benefits, in my opinion, are clear, and the concerns are addressable, and the potential for positive economic impact is significant. For those reasons, I urge us to approve the rezoning of two oh-six Griffin Street, the central business district, and welcome this respective business into its new home.
Mr. Mayor, my concern with that is that this rezoning does not specify what business will be moving into there. It's a, it's a blanket, if you're, if you're thinking about the type of business. So should that business move in and not be successful and move out? There's nothing prohibiting a bar from opening up that has very different hours in that building. So I understand what you're saying, and I respect it, but I don't think it's adequate. Um, and-
We, we could limit the kind of restaurant that we go in every time.
But then you're getting into micromanaging multiple aspects of... Anyway, my, my opinion, based on... Based on everything, is that we should accept the planning commission's rejection of the rezoning.
Okay. Jennifer, could you come forward?
Sure.
Could you help us understand why it was denied?
Um, as you all have the minutes from the meeting, as I was reading them over again, just to make sure I remember everything that happened. The chairman seemed to feel that the restaurant was the second business. It was, that his Airbnbs are going to be his main business, and he just felt like it was just a second, what is the words he used, of, uh, minor to the, and he just didn't feel that the, and the rest of the planning commission did not feel the restaurant would fit with the, the neighborhood, because it's R twelve and it's all residential, except for the one other business there, which is the Edward Jones-
Investments.
Investments. And that's mostly what his reasoning was.
I have a question, Jennifer, there, if, um, if we were to deny, or if we were to accept the planning commission's recommendation and deny the rezoning, that, that wouldn't stop, we would, the property owner would still be able to Airbnb or B, B and B that property? It would just be, there's not going to be a restaurant there?
Yes.
So, can, Mr. Mayor-
Which I don't have an issue, just for the record, with the Airbnb or the B and B being there.
Any other questions from this, this?
I have one.
The, you have to remind me on our zoning ordinance, since the planning commission recommended denial, how many votes is required for this council to overturn that? Is it a supermajority?
I think it's supermajority, yeah.
Typically, that's what you see, so council just needs to be aware of that, and I think it's, we'll have to verify that. It's probably going to require five votes, this council, as opposed to just your simple majority.
Okay, thank you.
But we'll, we'll verify that.
Okay.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I had, yeah, just a question, uh, Jennifer?
Yes, sir.
Under, um, changing the zoning to central business district, um, I'll ignore that. Central business district, the permitted uses, um, there's a long list of permitted uses, actually, isn't there? A lot of things.
Yes.
Pharmacies, auto parts stores.
Yes.
Hobby stores, printing shops, laundromats, dry cleaners, all those are, a lot of things. Once the zoning is changed to central business district, it could all come in, yeah, so, um...
If it was there before, right?
There was not a-
No.
Um, I don't remember, the applicant said he did not believe him, that, yeah, there was a restaurant and an ice cream store there at some point.
Yes, it was.
Okay, I, that was before my time, so I don't know.
And they rezoned it into residential, and I just wanted to-
They, I do know they rec- they did the residential because they wanted the bed and breakfast.
It used to be a hotel also, with the, on the back part of the property, it was rooms that became a boarding home at one time. So we had many different multiuses on that property.
Jennifer-
Just for information.
Yeah.
You don't remember that?
Maybe, Mr., maybe someone on council remembers, but when did the city of Pickens implement zoning?
It was way before my time, um, I would have to do some research.
I know a lot, most communities in South Carolina was usually in the late sixties, early seventies, um, which obviously was well before, was well after, I should say. This property was built and, and developed as a hotel or whatever it was, and, and the uses thereof, some of which were probably grandfathered over into a, a period of time when zoning was being implemented. Um, the, the, the fact that the zoning was changed, to me, is, was a symptom or, or was a response to changing times, and the fact that there isn't a need to have a line, a definitive line of where your commercial districts are going to be and where they're not going to be. And, um, simply using the logic that it was done in the past or whatever is, is, is not a suitable argument. Is not, is not a strong argument, I should say, um, given what we have today. And, and, and understand, we're not, this is not a PD. This is not being requested as a PD where we can interject whatever we want as far as restrictions. This is a zoning change, which allows a lot of different uses to the property.
The, the reasons why it was changed, I think we need to look it up, you know, that's a real reach for you to promote it on that. And I think, it was probably tax reasons, let's just, let's just say probably what it was. So he wanted residential, but whatever it was, you know, we don't know, so I don't think it was, he had in mind the best of our city. You know what I mean, he was, he had the best property in his own pocketbook. I'm sure that's what he promoted, this typically promoted. But I'll, I'll, I, whatever council wants, fine. But, Mr. Mayor, in the past, you know, if, if the person involved was in the audience, we allowed, like, we had, we'd be able to-
In the middle of time, we're going to get you my beer.
Let's get you my beer.
I'm going to get you my beer, thank you.
All right.
But I'm letting Jennifer first, and then I'll-
Okay.
Are you prepared to talk to us, Mr. Baker?
I have a question, but-
If you wanted to find and prepare.
Will you, will you talk to us?
Well, that's an interesting question. You know, I'll-
Would you, would you like to have, give the opportunity?
Yeah, I can answer some of your questions.
Mr. Mayor, I, I've got a question before he comes up. So just to, so I got this straight, so the rezoning is going to go to the, to the, his, this property, and it's stopping there all the way to-
Just his property, it would only be his property.
So it'll just stop right there with glassing?
Yes.
And it's a-
Just two oh-six.
Okay.
Yeah. Does not affect any other properties.
Let me ask a quick question. Jennifer, if, um, the property next door, two hundred Griffin Street, is zoned R twelve?
Mm-hmm.
Does, does R twelve allow driveways?
Like?
Like a paved driveway?
Yes.
So, 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 a property owner who has property in the central business district could use the property of a residentially zoned parcel to put a driveway to access a different street from the one it's actually located on, is that?
For two oh-six or two hundred?
For two hundred and two oh, and two oh-six. In other words, my question is, could two oh-six, could, could, could a driveway be built across the property of two hundred to access Queen Street?
I don't know, it'll be perfectly, I, I don't, would think not, because it's two different properties, and you're trying to connect them.
But if they're, but if you have the same owner?
Yeah, but there's, but there's still property lines.
There, that's never stopped anyone.
Well, I'm not saying, I'm disagreeing with you, but, but, but-
Generally, with an easement, yes.
Yes.
An easement from, from one, from the- An easement from one, from the owner of 200 to the owner of 206.
Which wouldn't be hard if it's the same owner.
Right, okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. Come on up, Mr. Baker. Y'all have any questions for Mr. Baker? My first question is, they always hear from other people. I want to hear from a man.
Yeah.
What do you plan on doing with that property?
Well, first off, we'll talk about 200, and if I don't put this out loud and clear, that a concern of the driveway, that's coming out. We're actually going to be putting in a pool, an in-ground pool there. That's per my wife. So, you don't have to worry about anybody driving through that area. We do plan on putting a buffer in between the properties, because it is, it's going to be rentals. You know, we do hope for it to be, you know, Airbnb. And, you know, I know there's concerns with having a business on the first floor and putting in a bar, you know. I don't really think that sounds great. I don't want to live next door to a bar. I don't want to deal with a bar, because it's going to affect my business, and my business are going to be the, you know, the rentals there. Are there any other specific questions you want me to address? I do know you said something about why it was turned to R-12. To my understanding, I have spoke with the previous owners that did actually do that change, so they could put it as a primary residence and get a reduced, you know, tax rate for it. Other than that, and the reason they did that is because the city told them they were still allowed to have their businesses inside there, because November 2018 is when they did the change. They opened up, I believe it was called Kay's, in 2019. So, the city approved it. All of that was allowed previous. They did question them and say, "Well, if we do this, can we still be allowed to have these in here?" And at that point in time, this is... This is just was relayed back to me. I don't have any of this documented, but this is my understanding, what I was told. And it was, it was approved. When there was another business after that, Moose Creamery actually went in, and that was allowed as a cafe, and that was, I believe, 2020? So, I mean, it's continued use, even though it has changed zoning. But, you know, any other direct questions about it, or?
People were talking to me about the stormwater, as far as, are you going to put a parking? I mean, are you going to pave it all the way around it?
To be honest, I'm not 100% sure on what we're doing. Truthfully, I've already removed a lot of the pavement, because I do want it... The way the road looped around and went right back through the courtyard, it just sort of removed its natural beauty. I would like to put grass back through there and possibly a gazebo or something out there in the open, and I don't want somebody driving through the middle of my courtyard. So, I did remove that. I do plan to repave a portion of it, but that's repave, not add pavement to it. So, it's a little bit unorganized back there. The way they have the road going through, it's a lot of wasted spaces.
You know how the rules just... I wanted to hear from you.
But, yeah, and I would like to sit here and tell you, I knew exactly what I was doing. In general, I know what I'm doing, but all of the exacts, you know, you got to be a little bit flexible. And I don't want to sit here and say, "Oh, yeah, it's 100%." It's like 99% that, you know, for our plans. And our plans were, since I purchased it, we're actually decreasing the amount of, you know, pavement.
Any other questions for Mr. Baker?
The parking issues there, you, since you're reducing the pavement, where, and you had a full house, where is spoken to that?
Correct. So, I'm actually working with another property to allow parking in the future. So, I'm working on a lease with them currently.
Including, if you have a restaurant going in there, they also have parking there too?
Correct, it would potentially be across the street. Yep.
Is that because you don't have enough parking or land to accommodate your full parking?
No, it's the fact that I don't want it to be a parking lot. I want it to be a courtyard, where people can actually go outside and enjoy it, you know, like it used to be, historically speaking. So, my preference is not to put parking in my yard, but I do. I've got, you know, almost an acre there. If I wanted to put parking, I would have, you know, sufficient parking there.
So, when you say your preference is to not have parking there, but you're not ruling that out?
I mean...
I mean, you're trying to work on a contract, but if you don't get it, what happens?
I mean, they've already said, "Yeah." I just haven't decided on how much of the area I'm going to take. So, I don't have the final... And I don't know how much I'm going to need yet. So, realistically, I mean, there's plenty over there if I wanted to take the whole space, but I don't want to. I'm trying to keep my expenses lower, so if I need an area big enough for 16 spots, then, you know, that's what I'm going to lease. And I didn't know if there was a requirement here from the city that I have it, because to my understanding with central business district, I'm not required to have dedicated parking, am I?
That'd be a question for...
No, all right. Next question.
Yes, thank you. So, you're 99% sure, so do you have conceptual plans that you would like to present that would show exactly how the property would look?
For which part specifically?
For the 99% that you're pretty sure you know what you're going to do.
It's already in place. The pavement that there is currently, I'm planning on keeping it. Now, I might redo it, because it's cracked up.
All right, so the 99% that you were pretty sure is only about the parking, not about anything else?
Which other part did you reference?
I'm just... You said that you had...
I mean, are you asking, "Am I changing the bushes there," or what specifically?
I'm not sure. I'm asking you. I don't know, because I want to know what your plan is for the property, and you said you were 99% sure that you thought you knew what you're going to do with the property overall. At least, that's what I thought I heard you say. And so, I just want to know what your...
I'm sorry if there was a misunderstanding. It was in reference to the pavement and the parking.
To the parking, to the pavement?
Correct, correct.
Okay, but you're not 100% sure, or even 99% sure about anything else?
Well, I mean, like I said, in general, could it move a foot or two? Could we do a better direction to where it's not wasted space?
I'm not talking about the parking or the asphalt. I'm talking about the bill at the house, your actual...
I'm not changing the building.
Right, but what's your... You've got to have a courtyard. You've got plans for what that would look like? A pool, how would that look?
The pool is going to be on my personal property. I'm not putting in a pool.
Where's the pool going? On the...
200.
At 200?
Yeah, it's a different property, correct. That's why I was telling you, that road's going to be removed. You were worried about an easement to Queen. That won't be there.
And has that pool been... Have you started work on that pool?
No, we're still working on the house.
Okay, sure, all right. So, things change. So, let me ask you this. Would you... Is your plan never to sell the property ever? It'll just stay with you?
I don't have any plans of selling the property.
I mean, but if somebody offered you enough money, would you sell it?
I mean, you're coming up with some pretty ridiculous questions. I think what you're trying to do is frame something. You're trying to sort of portray a really crazy... I mean, "Oh, if somebody offered me $100 million, aha, he'll sell it." You see? That's what I feel like you're doing. I feel like you're trying to lead somebody somewhere.
I'm actually giving you an opportunity.
Okay.
To explain yourself.
Come on, my friend.
And what I'm asking you is that you seem somewhat certain, totally certain, but not really certain about what you want to do. And the question is, here's the thing, when we change zoning, it's changed, not just for you, but for everybody that comes after you. You say you have a plan, a conceptual idea, whatever.
Yes, yep.
But who's to stop... There's really nothing stopping you from even after this, of tearing it down and doing something totally different.
Yeah.
Correct?
Yeah, I mean, it's sort of like Mike Tyson said, "Everybody's got a plan until they get punched in the mouth."
Right, so you don't have a plan?
I mean, in general, I have a plan, but things change.
Okay.
Yeah, you're right. I mean, if somebody offered me $100 million, you're correct, it's gone. Nobody's going to offer me $100 million for that house.
And I don't disagree with that, but my point is, my point there of that exaggeration is to make a point.
Yeah.
The point is that nothing's set in stone, ever.
That's exactly what I was saying. That was your goal.
Yeah.
I get you.
Okay.
Yeah, that's fine. It could go the same. I mean, do you plan on selling your house?
Don't talk to me about my house right now.
No, interesting. Yeah.
Wait a minute, y'all, timeout. Let's look at this for going, moving forward. We got to make a decision of whether we're going to honor the denial or are we going to go with the first reading. We can't do that tonight, voting on it. We have to vote on it in our regular business meeting. So, would that be further discussion and also first reading for if need be? Is that all right? And then we can move forward in that way, okay? Is that okay, Mr. Baker?
Yeah, y'all have any more questions, or was that it? Just worried about if I'm going to sell it?
No, that wasn't all. We just thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you so much. That's it.
Appreciate it.
Appreciate you, man.
So, we already said we denied the report that came to us, the denial of the property. I mean, that was a convoluted motion that night. I remember the way council overruled the planning commission, and we took this on ourselves. So, that's done. So, this is for a discussion.
No, we didn't do that. What...
The motion died for lack of a second.
That's right. It died like I said, we tried to get a second.
You just created that for the discussion.
And we brought it back for further discussion.
Oh, okay. I thought we didn't deny that much.
That's right, because John can tell you, you made the motion.
I made a motion, as well as Ms. Winter, and neither of us had success of getting anything done.
But we're going to have to do it in our next business meeting, okay? Is all the council agreement there?
We're going to, so we're going to have discussion.
And then vote.
Okay. And so, basically, just to put all this in a nutshell, we're just voting to change the zoning. All the other stuff is just changing the zoning.
Yeah.
Just changing the zoning.
And that's what we're doing.
Yeah, back to where it was before.
Right. I mean, we can't put labels or names or anything on it. We're changing the zoning.
Yeah. There you go. All right.
We might change it. I don't know. Same we're going to, I'm sorry, we might change it.
Discussion of ordinance number 2025-6, a minimum business license ordinance of the City of Pickens to update the class schedule as required by Act 176 of 2020.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
This is another one of those state functions where they have basically standardized business license fees and administration, and every, is it two years, five years? Every five years, they send us a list, two years.
It's to every odd year, right?
Yeah, I thought it was to... Every two years, they send out a list of classifications, which basically define business categories, who's in business, and how they should be categorized. Again, it's one of those state mandates that they have standardized this, and we just look at it and are asked to approve it and incorporate it into our ongoing business license program.
Mr. Mayor, are we going to actually have first reading on this tonight, or is it strictly...
We have to do all business in this meeting.
Yeah, we're just...
It's just for discussion.
Okay, just wanted to double check.
This is what you... Y'all giving permission to put on the...
There's not much discussion, and this is just mandated by law.
Yeah, exactly. All right, we're good? That will be on their agenda.
First reading.
First reading. Discussion of the ordinance to amend temporary signs. Jennifer?
Mostly what this is about is the planning commission was looking at the temporary signs ordinance that we have in place right now, and it's been there, I don't know how many years, I would say 10, 15 years, where it's 30, for like a banner at a business in general business district. Oh, I'm sorry.
Because temporary signs means a lot of things.
Oh, I'm sorry.
On premises.
On premises, temporary signs, sorry. Say a business, I'm going to use Hardee's, because it's general business district, and they want to put a sign out for a special they have or something. And it's for, say, it's a special for two months. Well, right now, our laws stay 30 days up, 30 days down. So, a lot of businesses, so I don't know if y'all know, but our chairman owns the CMG signs, and he does a lot of these local banners for local businesses. He says a lot of people have complained to him that it hurts them, that they have to keep taking it up and taking it down, doing that back and forth. So, we thought, as a planning commission, one of the things to change was to allow the people in general business district, this is not downtown, just general business district, to allow them to have one application annually. The council will have to figure out a fee to charge them, and then they can have one ban, one banner, or one, he calls them fluttering, not the men, but the fluttering banner things. I don't know what they're called. He had a word for it, feathering. Feathering, that's right. And they can use, they can have them year-round, but only one per property. So, they can keep putting up their specials or whatever, you know, things like that. That was the major change that they made on the temporary signs. And also, the other change was, as you probably all know, at the McDonald's intersection, we have it set where they can, it only can be, you know, event, special events, they've got to be within the city limits, and it's only for 15 days, and there's a certain size, and how many you can have up there. I think we can only have three up there at one time, because it was getting very busy up there. They did change it to allow, they wanted from 15 days to 30 days for events, so they could have a 30-day window to have one up, to get the notice out that they were having an event. So, that was the two major changes.
The temporary sign, I guess, I want to just clarify and make sure, because this is so confusing if you really dig into it. It won't, that won't apply to political signs, correct?
No. That is something, actually, I want to get with Daniel and figure out political signs, because I know there's a lot of... There's a... We don't talk about it now. You and I just need to talk about it. There's a lot of...
Do it before the election, Daniel.
Coming up on us.
Yes. Right now, that's what it says, yes. But we need to really talk about it.
Yeah, I read that, I'm like, what in the world does that mean, reading all this?
I know that we have a freedom of speech issue with political signs right now. We cannot, we cannot treat them according to the state court. We cannot treat them, how is it, differently than anybody else. They can't have specific regulations.
Yeah, the key constitutional question is being sure that you treat all temporary signs the same.
Yes.
If you have to read the sign to know what the rule is, then you possibly have a First Amendment issue. So, we, you treat all temporary signs the same, which generally speaking, I think this does, but we do need to address the political signs, making sure...
Yes.
We clarify that.
Yeah.
And obviously, political signs, that draws the attention of people, particularly candidates, or people who support candidates very strongly.
Yes. So, that is on my to-do list to get with Daniel about what to do about political signs. So, that is on my to-do list to get with Daniel about what to do about political signs.
So, basically, can't be any differentiating.
Nope.
Of stuff, two signs.
Basically, either you're, yes, I, I mean, I would say yes.
Okay.
Again, if you have to read the sign, know what the rule is, you may have a problem. So, if it's a yard sale, if it's a yard sale sign, and these rules apply, but that if it's a political sign, these rules apply, then that's a problem. 'Cause of both temporary signs, but you're treating them differently.
Well, I, I don't know that anybody wants to see, well, that's general business district, so. Where did the, the site, three by six and eight feet high come in?
That was just recommendations from him, the sign guy. I guess that's what he usually makes.
I'm glad this is just a discussion.
Don't ever worry, a work session is all about.
No, I'm telling you, that's a lot. 'Cause I'm not a sign fan.
I know.
You're not the one?
I'm not a sign fan.
Especially three by six, eight feet high.
Oh, no, 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 not three by six, eight feet high. You, not the same thing, right? Eight feet high is the feathering. Three by six is the banner. So, you gotta pick one.
Two different, two different things.
You can't have the same.
Cannot be more than three foot, three by six feet, and the fluttering, feathering banner cannot be more than eight feet.
Yeah, 'cause they're skinny. They're like, uh, Great Clips has them up right now. If you go by Great Clips.
Okay.
Or Liberty Pack.
Yeah, 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 exactly, yes. Those can't be more than eight feet. 'Cause we had a discussion with planning commission about the height of those, because at first, we had it for like five or six feet, and they made a point that is that including the, you know, the, the state. At that point, it's down on the ground and you can't see it.
So, right now, though, it, as it stands, they can put that up for only three days.
Thirty days, and then have to take it down for thirty days.
Right, and then what they wanna change is we just take only, if you have one, you can keep it up all time.
Yeah, but they can change it out, too. Like, if they have a special, yes, yes, yes.
All right, this right here is a coordinated plastic signs with me- uh, metal wires. That's the metal skate.
Yes.
They say they're all forbidden in.
It's been that way here for a while now. That was not changed.
All the signs are prohibited, and it's got a metal blade.
Yay, nice.
That's all political signs.
Well, it's not, it's.
Yes, he's right, it is.
Make up your mind, ain't bought none yet.
So, I mean, then how would a political, you know, just play?
Right now, they could put banners up.
Well, and also, the political kind of, if you treat them the same, how you tell them that they can only put up thirty days for the election?
Yeah.
'Cause you had to read it to know it's different. They can be up year-round, in theory.
So, then it begs the question, do you regulate political signs at all?
I think all signs should be the same. Under the same.
Yeah.
That's what I plan.
That's the safest way to do it.
Uh, that's just.
So, you don't have to have.
I mean, thirty days is long enough for anything.
Still, we'll say thirty days before.
Remember that, now, when you see all these.
It, that's, so you, you do have, council does have, talking about the constitutional issues. Council does have the right, without violating the First Amendment, to exercise, to adopt regulations, reasonable regulations, as a time, place, and manner. So, you may be, this council may be concerned about sign clutter. That's a legitimate concern. So, you don't, no one wants to see fifty signs in the right-of-way in one area. That just looks terrible, generally. So, you do have a right to regulate it, but we just gotta be careful about how we.
You have to regulate them all, not just one thing.
Yes.
And also says that temporary signs cannot be placed in the right-of-way. So, that means anything within the first twenty feet from the, from the road can't be used. 'Cause that's, that's the right-of-way of the road, either state or city, but it's in the ordinance, you can't put anything in a right-of-way.
And, and again, this is all complaint-driven. Coats, coats are always complaint-driven, so you, you have a, sometimes you have violations, but no one's gonna enforce it unless somebody complains, so is the ci- the city gonna go around, pull up every sign that's in the right-of-way?
Somebody will.
Somebody will.
So. This, we just gotta be careful about how we do it.
On private property, these laws don't apply.
Right.
Except the right-of-way.
Except for the right-of-way.
They can't be within some many feet of the road.
Right.
They got to be in your yard.
Yeah.
Well, I think my, you know, my opinion on that is, um, you know, we're trying to do everything we can to, to make our town look be more pretty and beautiful, and then all of a sudden, so I put all these signs all over the place. That just takes right away from the whole, the whole thing, but that's just. And the longest threat, that it's the same for everybody.
Yeah, that's the whole, that's the key.
That's it.
And so, that's why we look at it all in the the totality of it all, about how you want these signs to be projected, not just election signs, but any sign.
So, can I ask the attorney a question?
Yeah.
So, if, if they want, like, everything to be the same, political signs, everything, do we even need to address political signs in it, or do we just leave it alone? Or does that need to be still clear that it says political signs are to be treated like temporary signs, just to make it clear?
I think you wanna specify that you are, a temporary sign includes a temporary.
Okay.
A temporary sign includes a political sign.
Okay.
Well, it looks, it appears that the current, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, just a quick, quick point. Okay, I, I'll, we'll get to the, but let me just ask a question, because I know this is, I just wanna make sure I'm clear, on the, on the proposed ordinance itself, it's, is this correct, section four fourteen?
Okay, no, that should be four fourteen. That's not where it is. Oh, no, it should not be four fourteen. It should be what this is right here, sorry.
Okay, six, section six oh one, okay, okay.
Sorry, thank you. I'm coming for the next thing. I'm the next thing.
Are we, are we gonna come back to this, or we just gonna come back to it in form of a, of a actual reading?
Yes.
Okay.
And I'll change that.
So, be prepared for another big meeting. But, but the reason that we're doing this, and we're discussing now, all I wanna be able to do is vote. Unless it's something, but it's pressing. That's what work session is all about, getting all this stuff discussed and talked about.
Can we do something more, Mr. Mayor, than can we, than just pulling out the, the, can we assess fines? I mean, there are people coming through in their neighborhood, and they'll put up, like, if there's a heavy rain or whatever, and their house has a roof.
The zoning code has a general penalty provision in it.
Does the council have to establish that?
Our enforcement officer, then?
If we, if we issue a citation, there's a, a fine of uh, not more than five hundred dollars uh, for city code violations. Um, and also, there's some possibility of brief imprisonment. So, yes, we do have the enforcement tools at hand.
We can look at the zoning code. There's a, there should be a general penalty provision, like Town alluded to, and that would apply to this as well.
But that, that would enforce a little bit of the. Most of these are signs that I've seen, they're going up on the street that I go up and down a lot, around the stop signs. With that city property, right, it'd be meant to within our, so they shouldn't be putting signs up there, right? Right, correct?
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, do you want this for first reading for the next meeting, or, uh, so it'll be ready?
Is that okay, guys? Are you ready for that? Okay.
And then we'll discuss about what changes need to be made within that, and what we brought up?
One further question on enforcement, with, the person's name is on the sign would be the one responsible, and they wouldn't be able to say, well, I didn't put it there? Or there, I guess they would be hearing and able to write to make a defense to be. If it was a political sign, for instance.
Right.
Then they, they would have a right to. All right?
Okay. Now, we have a discussion of the Bailey Bill, Bailey Bill, the Bailey Bill ordinance.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Can we, uh, break for a five-minute recess?
Can I have a motion?
I make a motion that we break for a five-minute recess.
Can I have a second?
A second.
All favor? All right.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we reconvene from recess.
Can I get a second?
Second.
No. It's been properly moving seconds. All in favor, raise your right hand. We are now reconvene over one proposer.
Raise your right hand. You raised your left, oh, great, opposed.
Okay, now we're gonna talk about the Bailey Bill ordinance.
This is the last time I will see any of them. Um, the Bailey Bill is something that we are proposing to kinda help with attack, it's a tax incentive for rehabbing historic buildings, a lot of the ones that are in downtown. Um, anything that's in here that you've read, this is just a proposed, we can change numbers of any, any sort, we can do anything we want. Um, city of Columbia, Columbia we use is a very good example. They have one, and it's apparently very successful. So, it would be for any property at least fifty years old. Um, and you would all, council would have to approve those buildings. We could, we have a list. I did get from the county, sits on my desk, of all the property anywhere in the city that is over fifty years old. There's a lot. Um, so what this would do, if we're using what's proposed here, if a property owner invests a minimum of twenty percent of the fair value market of the building, assessed value back into the building, and the work is eligible and approved, then the assessed value of the property is frozen at the pre-rehab value for, we've got ten years, or we can do five, it's just what council wants. Go ahead.
Maximum of twenty years.
Twenty, yes, maximum of twenty.
I've never seen it applied over the years.
We would have to talk to the county and get some cooperation with them as well.
Based on case law, it's gonna establish that whoever, uh, says it. And the attorney can speak to this, but uh, there have been some challenges of this, but essentially, if a county issues a Bailey Bill incentive, or a city, um, that is the controlling factor to be used by the tax assessor. So, that would apply to city, county, and stool, stool, school taxes, um, across the board.
And the Board of Architectural Review, this would go under them as well to do the review, but you would also have some say in it, as well as council. Uh, there is an example in here. Um, I can read it real quick. You have a building assessed at seventy-five thousand, and your plans for improve, improvement include a new roof, removing the best, asbestos, sorry, and replacing it, um, rehabbing the original windows, and bringing electrical and plumbing to code. The cost would call approximately sixty thousand, so you would have met the seventy-five percent investment threshold, and the work planned is eligible. Through millage rates are subject to change over time, the property's value will continue to assess at pre-rehab rate for ten years, or whatever years council decides. So, this would help with a lot of the maybe empty downtown buildings that are just kind of sitting there and need, need a little love.
But it's not just for commercial.
No, it can be for residential, too.
And this can be significant, because obviously, if you buy a derelict building, um, and then you put, typically seventy-five percent is not hard to reach at all. It's probably more that you pay two hundred and fifty or three hundred percent of what you purchased the building for, uh, to bring it back into service and bring it up to code. Um, and then, that could make a, if you do it without this incentive, your assessed value could go from twenty thousand dollars for a derelict building to suddenly, you've got a million-dollar building. With this, this allows a true incentive, because it would hold that twenty thousand dollar level. Um, a lot of communities have done eight to ten years, not twenty years. Um, so that is actual savings off of the property tax burden of that taxpayer, and a real incentive to move forward. In fact, we have two uh, current project, um, prospective projects. One that we can't talk about quite yet, because it's not come to fruition. Um, it's under consideration. It would be a major project for downtown. And the other, it's no secret, is the, um, and I always call their name, it's Geo.
Geograph.
Geograph, and their rehab of the former behavioral health building would benefit, um, from this type of incentive as well.
I'm assuming it does not have to be a primary residence?
I would assume not. It's just based on historical age.
Commercial plus residential. Is there?
It does not.
Is there a certain, could one person have ten properties that's under this?
They would be, they would have to be under consideration individually, um, because it's more than just fifty years of age. Um, council has to have a finding. In each case, we would have to create a local historic register. And there has to be a finding of fact, both that the property is fifty years old, but that it contributes to the historical fabric of the community.
Okay.
So, fifty years of age is, it has to meet that requirement, but if it's a fifty-year-old mobile home, I don't think council would add it to the historic register. Uh, far be it for me to determine what you might do.
I think John would. Just saying.
Yeah, just, I've got a trailer. It's pretty old, but I don't know if it's that old. Um, Jim, you, you mentioned, I'm, I'm looking at the qualifications. It says one of two things, fifty years old or approved by city council. Where's the historic value and whatnot? Where's that, where's that stated in here?
I don't know that it's specifically stated. It leverages one against the other. Um, a city can, um, and must, under this, establish the historic register, which is a separate, uh, function.
Yeah.
Would not be accomplished through this specifically.
The, just, register of national, national register of historic?
No, just be of council.
Just local.
This is entire, this isn't state, this is county, this is.
Well, I understand the Bailey Bill, but you're saying historical structure, how do you define that? You're just saying it's a count, it's a city decision as to whether it's historical.
That's correct.
But it's not stated in this proposed.
It's, it's not stated anywhere, because it is entirely discretionary. If you think it's historic.
How are we gonna make it, how are we gonna make it historic, I mean, how are we gonna make that an issue if it's not in the, if it's not in the proposal?
Basically, if the, and that is around the language that we would invoke when we create the historic register. But there's broad discretion there. If it's more than fifty years old, and council feels, um, in its wisdom that it contributes, then it is historic. Is that correct?
So, so let's.
That's correct.
So, all right, Beth. I'm just saying, okay, so, the, the properties must meet at least one of the following criteria. Is this, is this the same one paper we're talking about? I mean, this is what I'm looking at. It's just.
I guess it shouldn't be at least one, it should be both.
It says, be at least fifty years old, and you're saying it should be fifty years old and have historic character?
Yes.
Correct.
Not just fifty years old?
It should be both, yes.
Okay, so we're, we're saying we need to add that to it, okay.
The council approves every application that comes before, for every property.
After the.
After the B A R.
Well, that's not how this is written right now, but we're gonna change it, you're saying. We're gonna make it, it says at least one. One criteria is fifty years old.
So, it needs to say both.
Yeah, yeah, I don't think this is for adoption. This is just.
No.
No, I get it, but what are we gonna adopt if we're not, I mean, this is where we're starting, right? I mean, so.
This was your memo?
This is just a, uh,
Yeah, it's, it's, yeah, it's, it's basically a summary. This is not the text.
This is not the.
No, I understand it's not the text, but I wouldn't have even have thought that was an issue or an important point, because this didn't describe that as important. It just says it's fifty years old. So, I just was wanting to clarify that we are wanting to do more with this.
It, the basic requirement is it does, it does have to meet both criteria.
So, I need to change.
Fifty years and historic, or fifty years historic?
Fifty years and determined to be historic by city council.
Okay, okay.
And there's.
So, we're.
Yeah. I saw one as I was reading it. Yeah, I saw the one, 'cause I, when I was reading it, yeah.
And I, I have not committed Jennifer's, um, memo to memory, but typically, this is all voluntary. Um, people, people request to be added to the, and typically, it's part of the process of, uh, of making these incentives available to themselves, is they will request through a notice of intent to be made part of the, and then that consideration will be made by council.
I'll also add that, in my experience, the property owner will have an attorney assist them with this application process. And so, usually, they're buried the mayor with what criteria must be met for this council to consider before approving it. That's, that'd have to be that way. I'm just saying, this is generally my experience.
Right. Well, potentially, there's a lot at stake here.
Sure.
Ten years of tax freeze? I mean, and, I mean, that's, that's huge.
That's making me huge, too.
It could be. Yeah, no, well, well, to me, the most relevant, the most significant part of this that's such an advantage is the fact that you can transfer this to another owner, and they still get that benefit. Um, so, it's almost like a tax credit program.
You could have spent a million bucks on it, too.
You could spend a million bucks if you had it, but you don't. That's all right.
Or a hundred million.
So, what is the next step with this? We just, we need to add some additional language here to get it really to what we want?
Yeah, we have an ordinance written up.
Well, yeah, we gotta have ordinance written up, but I just, so, are we, does, does the Columbia ordinance that you ref, that you reference, does it specify historic nature? And does it specify how that historic nature is determined?
I don't think so. Did, you said Buford had one too, right?
Pretty much exclusively, and again, our counselor can speak to this. Pretty much exclusively, and again, our counselor can speak to this, that has been avoided because this is entirely discretionary for you to determine. If it's fifty years old and you think it's historic as a council, then it is. There are no limitations on that.
Oh, I see.
Yes.
Thank you.
You're a little slow, yeah.
I am a little slow, but I didn't, I understand now what you're getting at.
If you would like to introduce limitations that.
Well, I just think it should be spelled out, so if I'm picking this up, I wanna know exactly what it is I gotta do if I wanna qualify. I mean, you're saying, I don't know exactly what I gotta do to qualify, but I can kinda guess and hope that if I can lobby council, I can get what I want, okay.
Well, a lot of this is dictated by state law too, so it's not like we're just making something up.
We just said we're making it up.
I'm talking, though. I think we're too far down the rabbit hole on this one area.
We're gonna move on.
This is not coming up.
We have something, we're gonna have this on the next agenda.
That's really complicated.
He said we do.
I think that, I think the ten years is good though.
Oh, yeah.
I don't think it should be more than that.
Definitely not more. Definitely not more.
Yeah. If we can get one.
Yeah.
We already had two guidelines, one was, what is it, ten years? And what was the other?
No, no, fifty years is the guideline, ten years is.
No, ten years for the tax.
That's the benefit, that's not the guideline, that's the benefit, you get a benefit of a ten-year freeze.
Okay.
I just wanna make sure we're clear about that.
All right, thank you.
Mr. City Attorney, does this require a separate, and I believe it does, a separate ordinance establishing the historic register?
I think I would go, I would, I think I would adopt an ordinance to do that, yeah. We'll have to put that together, but for something like this, I think we need an ordinance.
So when we approve this, we're gonna need an ordinance?
Yes, sir.
Are we through with you?
I think so.
You gonna stand till we're done? No, I'm just kidding, thank you so much for all you do. Now discussion regarding streetlights.
Mr. Mayor.
Where's the chief at?
I wanna say good things about him before he comes up.
Yeah, but I want him, everybody to see this man. Pickens is really that city that sits upon a hill that's all lit up now.
It is, it is. Administrator came to the fire department towards the latter part of April and asked us to take on kind of riding the streets at night and identifying any kind of lights that were out. It seemed like a pretty simple task in the beginning until we started riding the streets. We found numerous lights out, it took us about the whole month of May to go through, but I'm pleased to report that we found forty-five lights out, all have been repaired now. We also found seven lights that were on the map and we were paying for that were no longer there. So we've had Duke Energy replace six of those seven right now, they're waiting on, on an engineer for the very last one, which is at Johnson Street and Hampton Avenue intersection. It was destroyed during the Hurricane Helene and just never got put back on the pole. We did also identify nine lights that both Blue Ridge Electric and Duke Energy were charging the city for, the same light. When it was all said and done, they were all Blue Ridge Electric lights, so Duke Energy will be not only removing those from our account, but crediting us back, should be on next month, we should see a credit for those. But when it's all, what we had was four-hundred-and-sixty-six lights throughout the city is what the city pays for, and it's roughly about eight thousand dollars per month that you pay for, for streetlights.
Thank you so much. Mr. Mayor. Yes. Chief Elrod and his staff at the fire department did an excellent job with this, and it is yet another example of the culture we're trying to create. Because the fire chief is primarily concerned with putting out fires and preparing people to be safe when they're doing that. But for his department to recognize that they're here during the overnight hours, that they did have the capacity to play this team role, and then they did such an excellent job with it. Street lighting has been a persistent issue in the city for many years, and now, we haven't had a complaint in the last two months because all of our lights are on. They've developed a great spreadsheet that details where they are, what condition they're in, and they're doing this on an ongoing basis to check back to make sure, because as we know, streetlights burn out. So it wasn't a one and done, but they've embraced this task as part of the team in working with streets and sanitation, the police department, and then our local utilities. So I thank you so much for embracing it and doing such a good job with it.
Yes, sir, and this, we will be doing this quarterly, so just to make sure we have a better understanding now who owns what lights and what the city's responsible for versus what our utility companies are responsible for, so have a much better understanding of that than we did a few months ago. So definitely it's been a task, but feel like we've done, been able to accomplish it.
Very good.
Thank you so much, appreciate it.
We have a question, so is there, is there a bill we can look at that will tell us whether a street light burned out or several of them, and we can, we can tell, oh, we're not being charged, so that one must be out?
No, sir, no.
So where, all that, the electricity, this goes where, where, what bill?
Well, if it's burnt out, it shouldn't be burning electricity.
That's what I'm saying, it shouldn't be, so the bill should be showing less, right?
You are charged per light, they do not meter the electricity that a streetlight uses, you're charged a flat fee per light every month.
Whether they're working or not.
Whether they're working or not, that's correct. So that's why it was so important for the forty-five that were burnt out and the seven that were missing, for us to get those back on so that we're, about ten percent of the lights were not working, so we've gotten all those back on.
Okay, we didn't know that. And we're budgeting to that, right? This, this eight thousand dollars is in our budget, I don't know where we put it.
Absolutely, Mr. Mayor.
I noticed.
I got a quick question also, is there any plans or any requests to add any, anywhere?
And what's the process to do it?
They're right, and what's the process to do it?
Yeah.
Very simple, I say that you'd like to see us make recommendations where lights should be added, we could take citizens that would like to see them in their areas, and we can design the lights with Duke Energy. Blue Ridge has some of the areas, like especially the northern part of one-seventy-eight from Ingalls, all the way up to the high school, all those lights on the road are Blue Ridge Electric, but we'll be glad to work with whomever we need to and get lights added. There are some areas that are extremely dark, some of your newer subdivisions, street lighting was not included, and so a lot of that underground power now, so it would be somewhat expensive to do that, so as you're moving forward with plan development, I would encourage you to make sure you're thinking about streetlights as well, especially if the city's gonna maintain them.
Chief, real quick, Mr. Mayor, before anyone else asks a question, if you could, there, there seems to be a difference between how much each light is, so is there a difference between types of lights?
That is correct, yes, sir. Most of them have been changed out to LED now throughout the city, but it's different kilowatts, how much power they actually, how much light they actually illuminate, obviously the brighter the light, the bigger the light, the more that, the flat fee is per, and, and Blue Ridge Electric, I can tell you how much each light costs. Unfortunately, Duke has not been quite as cooperative with giving us that information, we kinda had to figure it out on our own, but we'll do that.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
And one other question, Mr. Mayor, is there the process for people to report lights being burnt out? What is the broader process, Mr. Administrator? Who do they contact, can they go on our website?
Well, these are, Duke Energy has a very vigorous website for putting in, and actually that's the fastest way is to go through Duke Energy and report a specific light and they'll get it repaired, there's a whole work order system.
That's, that's what we did with each one of those, you go to the light, they have an app you can download, plus they have the website, you, you pull up the actual light, you click on it, you say it's too purple or it's not working, and then you put in your information and within seventy-two hours, most of the time they have that, that light repaired.
And they communicate directly back with whoever submitted the report.
Chief Elrod, there, two-sixteen Bivens, they put up a new pole with the lights landing on the ground.
Okay.
So that'll need to be reported, or I don't know if there's a process, and once they put a new pole up, they send someone else back to put the light back up?
Whenever we do our next round, I'm sure we will make sure we take a look at that one.
Does Blue Ridge Electric have the same method of reporting lights out, you know?
They're not, they don't have the app, and, but they do have, you can do it whole line, or you can call into their call center, but if anyone needs a light reported, they just let me know, we have contacts at both power companies now, make it very easy to get those work orders generated.
So are you volunteering then?
Yes, sir, I'll be glad to.
Okay.
Continuing the tradition.
There you go.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Discussion regarding traffic on Main Street and parking. Administrator? Well, this evening we have with us Chief Beach.
Yes. I gotta echo what the city administrator said, what the fire department has done, and, and we compete, and we try to win, but they defeat us. He's a great paramedic, he's a great fire chief, and they're just crackerjacks, and thank you for saying a lot about this, it's a, it's an ongoing project with these lights. And to that end, I think you'll see in terms of the speed calming devices, maybe Chief Elrod might need to take this thing on because it's a Duke Energy issue, and really to the, to the citizens of, of this city, to my boss and to this council, I almost, I feel like I need to apologize, my naivete in dealing with these speed calming devices, i.e. that capture a speed limit and give you some sort of indication, slow down, stop, be careful, whatever you, you key into these computers, has been a project that has had me a bit stymied, and it started, the city administrator pushed and saw fit, identified the devices, did a fantastic job in getting that together, and you've got a public works director that can drive anything, who can fix anything, can build anything, and he was stymied with putting this project together. And our director, over all of our recreation, assisted me in identifying an electrician, because this came down to, again, Duke Energy, and what I did not realize, I'm, I'm a cop, what are they gonna do, call the police? We hang these things on a pole, run a drop cord, get electricity, and that is not how it is done. This is driven by Duke Energy and their new construction program to actually put in, just much like you just recently put in at the teen canteen, and we reached out to that particular electrician who I thought was working on the project, I had no idea that he was just too busy, and now we have another electrician, we have a work order with Duke Energy now, and this new electrician is working on the project. I look at schematics like this and I just, I could, I could do better with a homicide scene than electricity. But we inch closer, and I'm sure the city administrator is tired of getting my onslaught of emails as we inch a bit more close to this goal. I tell you, a, a group that has been instrumental in helping us is our school district, as, especially with where we wanted to place one of these devices, at the bottom end of Jewel Street coming into the city, which we're kinda called Main Street, we have a school there, they have an intersection where Director Morris was even, it was a couple years ago you were hit by a car there, it's, it's dangerous, we have the walking program of those middle school students, we've got to slow it down, and these devices, they work. Now, this electrician has got it, the work order is there, I'm just waiting on this electrician and Duke, and we fill out some paperwork, and I hope not to be standing here and looking at my boss who is like, why can't you get this done? We are close, and the other end is, would you come into the curve, I'm sure you're aware of the new traffic pattern down there that S C D O T put in by the open door, but it's just as you round that curve, it is a, there's high speeds, and the other device would go there. I think, once we get these things installed, I think you'll see the, they're not cost prohibitive, other than this, this side of it, learned a lot from this, but I think you'll wanna place these devices in some other areas, they, because they work and they're gonna slow traffic down. Parking, I don't, that's a whole nother issue on Main Street, but in terms of these devices we wanna talk about, and the school district mastered the computer for us, and now it's installed on the administrator's computer, then it's a decision on really what message to put up there, but these are great devices, you picked a good one, I think we're, we're just maybe thirty days away from getting these installed. Our goal was before the school year started, we did not make that goal, and that is, that's on me, and really in my dealings with Duke Energy, but we're getting there.
Chief.
Yes, sir.
You're really bringing me down.
No.
This, this is all about the culture of teamwork and all the hard work that you're doing to get this done.
It is, I'm telling you, the, it is, because I've, you know, I had rec, public works, everybody, and it's, I, I have learned a lot, and this is, this is on me, I've set some deadlines and I didn't, I didn't make them.
We're, we're behind, but it's an exciting project that will develop two big yellow signs that basically record what your speed is and can give you a message on slowing down and observing the speed limits, and it's gonna be a great project, and I thank you for, for taking the, for championing it.
I apologize publicly to my boss, who's been very gracious in all of this.
We'll have to come back when you can celebrate.
Yes, no, but we're, we're really close.
Yeah, to the parking end of it, we did provide in your packet, and council requested some information on solutions that might allow some level of automation for parking enforcement. We have found a system which I, I learned when I went to a dental appointment last week that the city of Clemson uses the same system. I learned it by receiving a citation from the city of Clemson for parking more than two hours. My procedure took two hours and fifteen minutes, and they were right there to give me a ticket before I got back to my car. This system, as you look at the materials that we've sent, time limited parking does create turnover, which is really the issue that we have of people who park and squat and just stay in one spot. We've talked about that that may be the direction council wants to move, and I wanted to bring this information back to you to say that we now feel like, essentially this system is nearly free, and like I said, Clemson uses it, by nearly free, I mean it's a two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar setup fee, there's a three-hundred-dollar printer that they use to print my nice citation that I got on my windshield. And, and I will tell you that it's very reasonable because I contacted Clemson and pleaded my case and they stepped it down to a warning, so I did not owe any, any money, I was pleased. But that is the same kinda system, it would allow our local codes compliance and law enforcement personnel, everybody who issues a ticket, you have on your phone where the person who got the ticket can scan the QR code, and they can say, well, hey, wait a minute, I entered my thing wrong, or I didn't understand, you know, this or that, you can talk to them. The system is two-hundred-and-fifty dollars, the printers, I believe, are three-hundred dollars apiece, it all operates off of your cell phone. And basically, you ride through and you take pictures, you can just kinda drive down with your phone up, and then you go back two hours later, and you do that again, and the computer tells you this car's been here for two hours, and you need, would you like to issue a citation? And you hit yes, and you go and put it on the windshield. So that is available.
So it's for us to decide whether we're gonna do it or not?
Correct.
All right.
I thought we were gonna use cameras.
Those are cameras.
Yeah, that's the camera you're talking about, the system that they use.
I'm, I'm.
For parking?
We can use fixed cameras when we have them as well, but we don't have coverage of all areas.
I thought we, this is gonna require an officer, right? I've been down that road, right?
Our codes compliance people would probably. Um, our codes compliance people would probably do the lion's share of, who will be third class officers.
There's previously been chalk on a tire.
And in answer to your question, as we expand our downtown surveillance system, which is always a priority for the police department, we certainly can put fixed camera input into it, and that would be our eventual goal. But that is, while the enforcement system is fairly inexpensive because they charge four dollars per citation, that's how they get their money. They get a percentage and we set the citation at whatever value we wish. It can be six dollars and we make two and they make four, it could be twenty dollars, and, you know, the math just stays that way. But the fixed cameras will be an expense that we'll have to address in coming budget year.
Just for the sake of people watching, so they can understand what we're doing, how does this work?
It essentially works so that, uh, they have, and I hesitate to call it artificial intelligence because I don't think it is, um, they have computers that basically compare images from one time period to another. They assign some, uh, it picks up the license and it assigns some GPS coordinates and positioning on that vehicle. And then, multiple times a day, you go by and you just, either a fixed camera's sitting there looking at the street, like we do have some surveillance now, we can input that, or somebody walks down the street or drives down the street slowly and takes pictures of the cars. And the computer basically comes back and says, this car's been here this long, this car's been here that long. It then, um, if we had a, which we do in our code, have a two hour limit, um, it would issue a citation. Council would decide whether that's at first a warning, it does keep track of who we've interacted with. So you can say that the first three times, you'd get a warning, and then the fourth time, you get a small fee, and then it goes up from there. But, uh, generally, this just, instead of the old days when a cop on the beat would go down and mark the tires with chalk and then go back to see if somebody was still there, um, this just automates most of that.
And to put it over these, this is not, this is not LPR technology, it's image technology. So it's not, it's not running people's tag numbers.
Correct.
It's just, it just sees it as an image, kind of like a, a digital image, and so it's not, their, their tags are not being run. People are, their privacy is maintained.
Yeah, it's kind of like Sesame Street, two of these things are alike and two are different.
That's exactly right, numbers and letters.
Thank y'all so much. Chief, you still, don't, don't, don't get so hard on yourself.
Please.
I'm trying to be the, I'm trying to be the fire chief. They're knocking it out, yes, sir.
Do you recommend this?
Yeah, really, Clemson likes it, and their, their traffic or, or parking issues are so far beyond ours. But it is with regularity that we get calls from businesses during the, uh, some law offices and others, and it is a bit of a problem, um, and this takes care of it, um, it really does. And your time window, and your, your ordinance is already in place for Main Street, and we're not, you know, it's really during these business hours. No one's getting clipped at night, uh, if they're out to eat in some restaurant and enjoying themselves, it's not a ticket time. This, this, this is, it pays for itself.
Yeah, and you can do this where it only operates, and I believe Clemson does it from eight to five or something like that.
You sign it to our current ordinance.
And also, as part of this system, you can, um, pay to park. Um, we could charge, which Clemson does, but we don't have to. And I don't think there's any intent to charge for general parking, but that's why, that's how Clemson supports a lot of activities, um, around streets downtown, is they do charge, I think it's a dollar ninety, uh, for two hours of parking. Um, not recommending that, but when we complete these lots and add parking off-street, um, there is an opportunity to use this same software to say if it's convenient to you to use this surface lot, there may be times when we can charge and this would support that. So that you park, you scan a QR code, and you would make a micro payment, um, through that app to, to have permission to park in that space.
Okay, thank y'all so much, appreciate you, chief. All right, a commercial truck, uh, from what I hear, there's no changes gonna be made, right?
Yes, it's just information that the, um, we do have several layers of backup plan in place on the commercial garbage truck. Uh, the garbage truck that was presenting a problem has been reassembled and is currently operating somewhat better than, uh, considerably better than it was before. Um, these would be eventualities if, in fact, we did have an emergency. But the recommendation is to make do through this budget year unless cataclysm strikes us, and then you've got the information on what our next steps would be.
Any questions about that? We're not gonna be doing any changes for trash truck at this time, we're gonna try to make do with what they have.
Somewhat better, Tim? I mean, I sort of picked up on that, it's doing somewhat better, or is it...
It is better than it was, and it was functioning before.
What did that mean?
That meant that there was a recommendation that it go through a twelve thousand dollar outfit for fuel pump. When they put, when we said no and they put it back together, it worked better than it went in in the first place, so.
So can we depend on it?
As much as you can, any mechanical, uh, item, and basically, we feel that we're prepared with backup solutions if we need them.
I, I just have one question, does this, does this truck that we did buy have a guarantee or warranty? I didn't see any nearby.
A guarantee or warranty? How old is that truck?
No, no, not that one, I'm talking about this.
The one that I submitted the information on is a new truck, so it would have warranty.
So there, somebody's had miles on it, right?
Yeah, so it's currently in a rental fleet, um, this company rents trucks, they also sell trucks. Uh, that's where the rent to own option comes from. Um, there's several different options they offered, and I, but you've got all the options there were, but, uh, it would still have a warranty, the factory warranty on it still, because it's got five thousand miles on it, so.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I thought you were referring to the, our existing truck.
No, no.
Yeah, we don't want a truck.
I, I just read that I didn't see a warranty or guarantee in that, and I just wanted, if we decided to go that way, that we would have one, at least for a while.
So we're gonna continue as going for right now, right, Trey? Yeah, you're gonna let us know if you can't make it, right?
Come on, whip it as long as I can.
All right, that'll work. Okay, discussion regarding updating supervisory and control data acquisition SCADA.
Okay, and, uh, Trey is probably the best person to speak to this, but we did bring back information, um, because as we know, uh, portions, and you guys all went on a tour, or several of you did, we have a pretty sophisticated SCADA system, but for only portions of our water distribution system. Uh, there, we did get a quote for what it would cost to, um, spread that across the entire system. And again, the question is, how much of a priority, what is the timing, um, what is the cost? So we're bringing information back to council for their consideration.
Yeah, so this would put all, we have some water pump houses and water tanks on SCADA now. That would cur- that would, you know, work the same way as the new stuff. It would be updated, a little better signal, um, but this puts a few more water distribution tanks and pump houses on the SCADA. But the big one for us is the lift stations, sewer lift stations. So right now, currently at every station that's listed there on the SCADA quote, there is a nice stainless steel box with everything needed to collect the SCADA information. Um, it collects all the information, it just doesn't send it anywhere. And that stuff's all brand new, but put in, from what I figured out about six years ago. And this is, you know, these are pretty high dollar panels that, it's like, they were running a marathon, had two miles left and said, all right, I'm done running. So, um, the biggest cost of that is already there, it just needs somewhere to send that information to. And right now, the way it works, um, if we get a high level call, which, um, priority one, we have a float in there. If the sewer gets to that float and turns it over, they call us, hey, you've got a high level, you've got a problem. Well, ninety-nine percent of the time, when we go to those, all it is is flipping a pump on. So we drove a truck five minutes down the road to flip a switch, drive five minutes back down the road. And this may be at two o'clock in the morning, it may be at eight o'clock in the morning. But with this SCADA, it would also give us controls there, so we could get that call. I could look at it either on a telephone or in my office on a computer and say, that pump isn't working. Now it's pumping. So you would probably, I would say ninety-nine percent of the time, we have to respond, those high level calls would be cut to none because it'd be able to turn the pump on from the SCADA instead of driving to it.
How often do you get those calls?
At least three a week.
How many, just wastewater or water?
The calls for high level are strictly wastewater.
Okay.
There is no call-out system for a tank overflow.
Which we found out.
You just go to the tank and see it, and then fix it.
And...
But updated SCADA would eliminate that.
Would it, would that help with the security as well, like, or is that gonna be a separate thing?
Insofar as it provides internet at every location so that cameras could be installed.
Yeah, it would make it easier to put cameras, but they don't intertwine directly together.
I was gonna ask about video, we can't do it at the same time, I mean, we could on our own, but they don't offer that, SCADA does not.
I do not think Counter Controls offers that, but I also have not asked.
It's not related to, to what they do, but the, once we get the internet there, the cameras are simple enough. Everybody's got one on their front door now.
They put ring cameras at every station, hook up to the internet.
Councilman Rogers does not have one on his front door, because I've, I've thrown some things over there several times, and you, you've never seen me.
Never seen me.
So I, so... How do we, how do we pay for this? How do we pay for this? I mean, it's...
Good question. Man, how do we pay for it?
Um, Trey, how do we pay for it?
We do have some capital improvement funds that are available, but I do have another capital improvement project that needs to be completed as well. It wouldn't take up all of those funds, but it would take up about half.
So the other...
So where would the other come from, maybe?
So capital improvement is what you're...
That's what would have, what I was planning to take care of it with, um, after me, you, and Tim had talked over some things there. And, um, we have since had a sewer line that needs to be installed come up that personally I would like to see take priority of the SCADA. Not saying that the SCADA's not important, and it wouldn't make our life easier, but I think the sewer line should be laid before we get SCADA.
How much of a sewer line do you have to lay?
It's about fourteen hundred feet.
Where?
With a creek crossing, um, from Sakona across to South Church Street.
And it's been a long-term priority?
That's been a problem for maybe a year and a half now. There's four houses that are currently on separate tank.
Really, it's been ten years.
Yeah, that, that I've been involved with in is about a year and a half. There's currently four houses, uh, two houses per separate tank, which is a terrible idea, if anybody knows anything about separate tanks. Um, and they are being pumped regularly, they do pay a city sewer fee, so the city has been pumping them for them. But it's available with a little bit of work, so I think it would be best for them that we complete that project and get them hooked into our sanitary sewer system, so they do not have to deal with the stress and everything that goes wrong with a separate tank.
So is, is that project currently in the budget?
Yes, it is in the capital improvement.
That was projected into that, so that's what you had an idea to do.
So we had, the capital improvement funds were to do projects like that. That wasn't a certain, this money's for this project, but that's what that's for, yeah, yeah.
That's a priority.
To me it is, yes.
And to me as well, because we've made promises to those individuals. This would be a great improvement to our system. Um, essentially, it comes down to, we know that there are gonna be things that are gonna come up. We've already budgeted for already, for other things, not this. So if this remains an immediate council priority, um, it would require at least half of the funding be amended into the budget, or we wait until, which again is my recommendation, and I know I will sound like I'm being repetitive, but, um, that's why we have an annual budget process is to establish these priorities. We can make that part of one of the top level priorities for next year's budget. But that is up to council to make that decision.
I agree with that one hundred percent. To wait?
Why don't we just, what, what would it cost to just install it on a lift station?
So we would have to have that very top line, that first one, we would have to have that to collect it, so there's fifty-two thousand dollars there. And then, um, after that, it is pretty much twenty-three hundred and eighty dollars per station, that's six stations. So, we need some equipment out here.
Fourteen thousand dollars or so?
Yeah, so roughly sixty-five to seventy thousand dollars to just do the lift stations. And, I mean, if that's what was decided to do, we could have lift stations and the current SCADA we already have on the water distribution side going. But I don't see, I mean, the SCADA that we have has been working for, you know, ten, eleven years. I don't see that it hurts us to wait ten more months, personally.
Remember, we went to one place and this, this scale had turned off. So could, would you have the ability to turn it back on remotely?
If a pump is turned off, some stations, yes, we can turn them back on remotely. Not all of them currently.
Not all, but if you had a new SCADA system, you could turn it back on? Because I think someone went in and turned it off because of, I don't know what, and, and you turned it back on, so you could do that remotely?
Yes.
Was the pump off or was SCADA off, as the council...
The pump was off, yeah.
Trey?
Pump was off, SCADA was saying it's on.
Quick question, um, on the last page here, it says all remote sites require sixty dollars per month data plan provided by KCSI, that's sixty dollars per location.
Correct.
Which is a thousand twenty dollars a month.
Correct.
Twelve thousand two hundred forty dollars a year.
Correct.
Which is not in the budget, just saying. As much as I'd like to do this, I don't know how we, how we do it this year without a, a budget amendment. And I'm not proposing that, I'm just saying, it's, it's not, we're talking about taking capital dollars, moving it around. We've got capital needs, we've got emergency needs still, I mean, we, we don't know, we've seen things happen. Alga, pipe, whatever, I mean, I don't know how much of that is our responsibility, but I mean, things come up. I just feel like we still need to plan for contingencies. So spending that money without it really being in the budget is, is really the issue. It's not spending the money, but we just didn't budget. And if, if we get a windfall, you know, four million dollars from FEMA, whatever it is, you know, well, we can, we can talk about it, right?
So, question, how many, how many of our facilities are, have internet in there already?
The ones that currently have SCADA.
Just from that, and how many of them have SCADA?
Eight.
Eight. And that, none of those are the lift stations?
No.
But the, the high priority ones that we would like to monitor, the ones we talked about, where they would do the most standard damage if someone got, of course, if someone were doing what they were doing, they could just block the internet going and do what they want anyway, but...
It's gonna be tough to do anything to the water system, it's a pressurized system. It'll be hard to get anything in the pipe, soon as they cut it, it's gonna get sprayed in the face, so. They'll, they'll have a hard time doing damage other than electrical, you know, messing up pumps or something.
Or leave something and leave and then it goes off after they read it. Okay, then the point is...
Don't give anybody ideas.
They don't need ideas, they're, they're, I, I was just wondering, I was just put cameras in. For that, I think that's what all the council that went on the trip, we all thought, well, let's put cameras in, I think that would be the cheapest, quickest, and we could SCADA next year.
So...
Should've got to have the internet.
Let's do a trail cam.
Which is a possibility, huh?
Unless we have what?
Trail cameras.
Don't require internet.
And they have cameras outside the vehicle.
That if we had cameras there and somebody went and left a device and blew it up, we'd be able to rewind it and say, "Hey, they left a device and they blew it up." We would not prevent it from happening.
But mind you, all of those facilities are locked, so it's not like anybody can just walk in there, they're gonna have to do some work to get in there, so.
Unless the fence is down.
Yeah, we thought they-
Which we're, we're getting that back up.
Okay.
Okay, y'all, what are we gonna do as far as SCADA is concerned? We're gonna wait till next year?
I think we should take everyone's recommendation that just spoken, wait.
Yeah, good idea, that will be on the agenda. Okay, discussion regard, thank you so much, Trey.
Yes, sir.
Offer to purchase property, that's the property that we were talking about, Councilman Rogers, down here on one seventy-eight, that was the Dalton Park.
Mr. Mayor and council, um, this offer has come in, uh, we've been, oh, can you have it at hand? We've been discussing, as we were walking through the, uh, process of purchasing the property, we had a number of interested parties, um, who did keep in contact with us. Um, and this group was one of them, from, uh, South Fork Properties. Uh, basically, uh, they are, uh, a partnership that has worked on largely single-family, uh, and duplex housing projects, which may be ideally suited for this odd piece of property, uh, which we know part of the problem was that large-scale, commercial and multifamily properties that the prior owner had tried to, um, make work there would not work, uh, with it being bisected by sewer. If somebody comes in there and does a, uh, single-family or duplex project that would be on either side of that sewer line, that could work, um, unlike the other, uh, perhaps, perhaps the highest and best use of the property if it didn't, weren't bisected by a sewer line. Um, we paid a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for the property, plus we extended a, uh, a letter of donation to the, uh, prior owner, uh, for the, I think it was the difference between that-
Appraised value in the purchase.
Which it did appraise for one hundred and seventy thousand dollars, um, so we paid one twenty, the offer is for one seventy, with the caveat that they, um, that we would essentially hold the note, um, as the property is developed, uh, they would pay a twenty percent, uh, non-refundable deposit, and then they would develop individual lots and basically pay out, uh, before a certificate of occupancy was, um, issued on any of those properties. So that is the offer as it stands. Um, certainly, the city, uh, council can, uh, you know, these purchase and sale decisions are entirely up to council. Uh, you could decide to, uh, you know, as I said, this is unsolicited, it's not on the market, so we could put it on the market and see if there is additional interest. Um, we could continue to negotiate with this individual, um, you've reviewed it, uh, do you see any issues with the offer as it stands?
It's void.
What's that?
It's void.
Well, as far as the deadline?
Yeah.
They, they emailed today and said, "Don't worry about the deadline."
Okay.
I would, I would prefer for the, uh, not to hold a mortgage against the property, I would, I would like for the, the city to see if he pays the full, full amount or get separate, separate financing.
Yes.
I don't want the city to be in the business of foreclosing.
Absolutely, we're not in the business of lending.
And at this point, um, like, like you need more to do, uh, but since we do have, would you prefer to, to make the response to that offer, or?
I can.
But-
Or does council even wanna entertain it, or just put it on the market?
Wait, do, do you think that we could do that as a matter of fact?
I think we should find out.
Yes, I agree.
I'm just asking for opinion.
I don't, yeah, I don't, I mean, I, I don't know, because this isn't, John would probably have a better answer than I would.
John? Oh, I don't usually add it.
Yeah, you don't either. The, first off, I don't, I don't like the offer, um, just, I don't like it for, for the same reasons Daniel has stated as well. Two is, I, I thought the idea is that we would be able to approach this where we're gonna correct our sewer problem and create some value, because we can fix the sewer issue. Now, if we're saying the sewer issue can't be fixed, so where it's a better, developable piece of property, then that's, that's fine. I just, my understanding was that we could potentially rearrange our sewer lines, put them where they were supposed to go originally, or at least we thought they were supposed to go, and maybe we have a better buildable piece of property that could actually be something of a gateway property for the city, as opposed to just a, a lot with some houses on it. I understand, i- it's not like a huge moneymaker as, eh, eh, this offer, I mean, it's not like we're, we're gonna walk away. We, we, I don't know about the arrangement with the, kind of a joint venture thing, I'm not sure that's a wise idea, um, in this situation, but, um-
I'm not sure a joint, I, a joint venture is not legal, I understand. Holding, holding a mortgage may be okay, but-
Well, if I understood correctly, we're getting fifty percent of the profit from payment of, of lots, I guess, is that not a joint venture?
Yes, our lawyer would have to bet this one pretty well.
Yeah, that, that would, well, that's your typical, um, kind of a national builder deal, they pay down as they sell lots, they pay down the debt, that's kinda how he's approaching it. That's not something I'd recommend the city do.
I mean, they're, they're getting the property for free, and we're getting paid, maybe if they ever build and sell a lot, maybe. Of course, I guess there is a limit, there's a time limit there, was it five years or something? But so in five years, what could we have done with it while we're waiting? I mean, if nothing happens, we're waiting, we've, it's been held up for five years. And we, maybe something comes along that we really wanna do, anyways.
Well, it just begs the question, would council like to place it on the market or just continue to?
Like to have more information about what we actually own, what its potential is. And, and what is the planning, what is the, uh, comprehensive plan going to say or suggest that is best use for the property?
I agree, and I think, um, I think it would be worth, I mean, I, I, I believe we did look into correcting the sewer issue there, right?
The, the, the sewer issue there is only related to if you wanna build a coast-to-coast development on that site. There is nothing wrong with sewer there.
Right, right, and that's my, that's my point. If we can build the coast-to-coast development, the property is worth tremendously more than it is right now. That's what I'm saying.
Especially on one seventy-eight.
Especially on one seventy-eight, so.
I mean, it could be anything, um, I think it's enough room to have anything. But I agree with you, we need to know the, what kind of worth this property could be, what potential-
I mean, potentially, a feasibility study might be, should be in the works to where-
And I like the fact that you mentioned about the, uh, comprehensive plan also. That's gonna help guide us in a lot of the deliberations that we have in the future. Make a plan and stick to it. Thank y'all so much.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I would, I would suggest that we just tell this developer things, but no things right now.
Is Elbert okay with that?
Yeah.
Will do. Okay, South Carolina Rural Water Association Voting Delegate. We received a letter that invited our water department head, which would be Trey, and also administrator to be delegates and voting, as voting delegates to the South Carolina Rural Water Association. Uh, we have to approve this by resolution. So I wanted to get everyone's approval to say that we can go ahead and move forward. Being, um, on the Rural Water Association, that means they have access to training, um, also resources, where they have a network that if you need something within the whole state, they can help you with those needs. Um, it's just a good thing to be in, into as we move forward.
It's the Municipal Association of Water Professionals.
Thank you for that, Andrew.
So, it's just training, it looks like, I mean, you, you attend meetings and you get, you have access to training? Are they gonna be voting on behalf of the city, or?
Yes, uh-huh, just like you get, um, we'd be in District Three, and it could be one day that Trey would be voted to be over that district. Uh, it's just according, uh, any delegate can, can be a part of it.
Would council then be directing their vote, or?
No.
There, th- this voting is about their internal, what are we doing, and what kind of trainings are we gonna offer, and what are our initiatives? It's not anything that's gonna bind the city.
Okay, that's one I'm asking.
Just a professional-
It's a professional organization.
Yeah, okay, thank you. And we're not, we're not a member now?
Yes.
We are?
We are a member. But we don't have a resolution approving who our members are.
Oh, okay, got it.
Okay, we can put that on the agenda, go ahead and get the resolution together, to attorney?
She looked at me, I was like, "Go ahead, please."
See, I got it.
That was not the Rural Water, yeah.
Okay, standing committees, before we go further and have a long discussion, do y'all feel like we need to do this? Go to standing committees or leave it as committee? That's one, the whole.
I think you know what my opinion is.
What is it? Tell me.
I like standing as a whole, committee is whole.
Committee is whole, what do you think?
I'm, I'm on, I'm on the fence, because I talked to somebody who was on council before, and I, I was positive toward this, and they said, "The reason why we, we voted against standing committees is because it divided council up." So that there was some people that had control in some areas and some people that, and they felt like council is a whole lost control of what their job was. So they felt like probably would be, in their opinion, you know what I mean? So that's why I wanted to discuss it maybe with the attorney or something, would, I, I still am a little confused as to what exactly, what benefit it would give us, you know what I mean, and, and would council actually, would it make us more divided? You know what I mean, instead of, um, council working together on all the issues?
I don't think we can be more divided than what we already are.
Yeah.
I'm just kidding, I'm just kidding, that's a joke. But, um, I was bringing this up because it gives you really more hands-on with different departments.
I like that aspect.
And it doesn't really, it's according to the members that are on council on whether you're gonna be separated or not. Um, for a long time, and I would, I'm, I know I'm on Facebook, and I'm just gonna say it out loud. This side was against this side. I don't care what this side was doing, this side was gonna be against it. That's not the way in which to do business, and I don't think we have a council now or in the future that would work on those aspects. Um, I think it's a beautiful thing to have standing committees, because it can help, just like a lot of the questions you're asking, that's taken up most of the night. We could have a committee that always asks those questions, iron out those things, and then bring back a recommendation to the committee as a whole. Um, that's why-
You mean the council as a whole?
Yes. And, um, that's why I was wanting to even entertain it to some degree. Um, it would help especially new council, when you come on, you can get really indoctrinated with certain things, because I know a lot of times you come in here and, and sort of don't know what's going on. But when you have these other extra meetings with those, um, entities, you're able to have a better understanding and you can bring back a recommendation to council. Now, that being said, I was just bringing that up to give us all aspects to where we can have all options on the table. We don't have to do this. Um, I did it both ways. When I was on council, I enjoyed committees, because I had a hands-on, and I was able to really get a deeper understanding of whatever I was chairman over. Um, but if you wanna just keep it as committee as a whole, I have no problem with it.
Would that mean that, for instance, it's the committee, I think there were committees on annexation and all that, so the annexation committee would basically be making the decisions, they're just coming back and telling us what they did?
No, uh-uh.
Make a recommendation.
They'll make recommendations, and you can, as council as a whole can shoot it down, say, "No."
But they have all the information, though, that's the problem, so then they're gonna, if we say, "No, we, we don't like-"
No, they're gonna, you're gonna get all, you'll get all the information too if you weren't on that committee. They will provide that when they bring forth their recommendation.
Oh, okay, so they-
They wouldn't just blindly say, "Okay, we looked this over and this is what you think, I think you need to be able to do." When you get your packet, you would get the same thing that that committee would have.
Okay, so they, but they're meeting with all the people separately, then coming back with a recommendation with a, with basically their notes and something as to what, what they did.
Yeah.
And now they interact with it.
And then you would be doing the same thing with your committee.
Okay.
And, um, that's just, like I said, I threw it out there.
Yeah.
'Cause I'm trying my best as mayor to get more efficient, to be able to work together in a more harmonious way. I don't ever wanna get on that slippery slope, that we start not working together. You don't have to agree, but you got to work together and, and get some things accomplished. That was my whole point. Now, that being said, if we don't, huh, you got a question?
No, I was asking the attorney, what he thought would hit better.
I've seen, I've seen it work well, uh, the sample rules that you have in the packet are from another city I represent, and it's worked well there. They have standing committee meetings once a month, which, which would take the place of your committee as a whole meeting. And so typically, they, they'll have an agenda for each committee, that's posted every, all for you, laws apply. And those, about one by one, each committee meets, and the, the council members who are not on that committee will, are in the room. So they're typically, they're in the audience, listening, and you have your three-person committee around the dais talking. And so everyone is privy to the same information, but you have a focus group who is diving into whatever issue is before it. And the way I've seen it work well is it just, it, it does, I think it does promote efficiency, and it does promote maybe some more in-depth, um, conversations and, and diving into the issues. So, you know, it's not me to say to recommend council do it, I have seen it work well, though, for the very purposes that the council members who have already spoken are in support of it.
Have you ever seen it not work well?
I can't give an example of it. I've, uh, you know, I've, most, I've, I've, I don't know how many jurisdictions have standing committees, I think it's kinda half and half, actually, committee as a whole and standing committees, so I, I really haven't done a good sampling of various municipalities.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Let me ask Daniel a question, a couple of questions as well. Um, so are you saying that in a committee meeting, the committee members who are in the committee and then the other council members would need to be at those committee meetings, or they just can be?
They can be.
Okay.
It, just the way that, that this other city, it, they have the committees back to back to back, so you're there.
Oh, okay, they do them all at one city, basically.
Yeah, and so, yeah, and they're, I mean, you could, you're free to leave if you need to, if your committee's over, but I didn't want Floyd to be concerned that he wouldn't be privy to the discussions and what's going on, and you sit here and listen, but you can't, you couldn't talk and ask, give your input while the committee's talking, if you're not in the committee.
And is there a law that says which committees you have to act? And is there a law that says which committees you have to actually have? I mean, could we say, "We're gonna just do two committees, 'cause we don't really need the others"? Or do we, are we stuck if we say, "Okay, we're gonna do committees"?
No.
And then now we just, these other issues can't be, I don't know, just curious.
No, that, these are, these are the committees this, this city uses. I think the committees that were previously used by Pickens were different, similar but different. I don't think you had as many.
No, we had the Public Works, Finance, Parks and Rec, Police and Fire, and the City of South. So why did, why did the city of Pickens decide to not do this anywhere?
They wasn't participating. They wasn't making these meetings.
You're saying council members were not showing up for the committee meetings?
That's right.
So, so why were they not shown? 'Cause it's, was this require more meetings?
No, so you would not have this meeting.
So we wouldn't have a work session? We would still have a regular meeting, but not a work session?
Right.
Well, you would, I'm sorry, you don't have to do that way. I'm just saying, do you wanna, do you want a third meeting a month? Probably, I don't know, let's do it.
That's what I was agreeing.
Not if those two are on it.
I plan on being on every committee.
Yeah.
We there you will.
Well, my, my question, I gotta...
Oh, that'd drive Floyd crazy.
So, another question is, is, um, would you be on more than one?
Yes.
Okay, and then so...
Most, how it was, you had one, you could be the chairperson of a committee and be a member on the other committee. You know, it always had, they moved it around like that.
And so who, I guess I got two other questions. Who is appointed? And the next question would be, so the situation we were in when we were down to, what, three or four members? I mean, that would have not have been good. Everybody been on the same committee, right? I mean, I know you can't predict that. I know you can't predict that, but it, it did happen.
It did happen.
And so it's, um, I just, you know, I just, I don't know, I just, I'm just getting used to this, man. I'm just getting used to this, this whole situation and getting comfortable with it now.
I have no problem with it. Like I said, me being here and sitting in this chair, I'm just thinking of things that can help us be more efficient.
And I appreciate that, I really do.
I'm just saying, I may be, I could be wrong.
No, I don't think nobody's right or wrong.
Very seldom, but, uh, I could be. But no, seriously, y'all wanna just put it on the back burner right now?
Yeah.
Because you need to think about it a little bit, don't you? Don't you?
I'm not a big fan of it.
I'm not, right now, I'm, I'm feeling like, I really like to be involved in everything.
John?
Well, I'm, I'm somewhat on the fence, like Councilman Rogers, but not for the same reasons. But, um, but, yeah, I, I'm not gonna, my, it's just another time, you know, drain that, you know, limited time as it is, so another, another...
'Cause I would really want everyone to get together. I, I think it goes three meetings a month, you know, because I would wanna hear everybody's opinion. And I'd still want a work session, 'cause you're not making a decision without me knowing about it, and I wanna hear about it in a work...
But there's no decision making.
Counsel, I understand. I'm sorry, Councilman Rogers, it's not one committee making a decision. The committee is, is doing the legwork.
But, but that, that will only happen in, in that one session a month, and they don't have time to tell us all that. So to me, their meeting and everything, it's to bring council up to date before a vote? To me, we would have to have a work session here.
But you would have that in your packet? You would have all information?
You never, this package is never meant for me. I'm just reading this and that, okay, well, we'd be on the phone a lot, or what?
But you know what, Councilman Rogers?
I don't know.
We don't have to go back and forth right now because...
Mr. Mayor, we'll just put it on the back burner.
Nobody really wants to do this. I, I mean, we had people saying, most of them, what about you, Councilman?
I don't think so.
So, we don't even have time.
But I will say that I like the thought of being more involved with the departments. Because that's something, like, that's the only thing that I feel like I would say.
That's what I was thinking about, so don't complain. When you're not involved in the public, parks, markets, you need to be there and talk to them. And, um...
Is there another way for us to be involved in departments? Without making the committee? To me, this is making a lot more work. And it has given us some control that we'd like to have. So is there another way to do this?
No.
Mr. Mayor, it sounds like we, we have, I think that, that...
I asked a question.
I'm, I'm sorry, I thought you were just making a comment. I heard a pause, so I was just, sorry. Go ahead.
I, I, no, I really wanna know, is there another way?
Well, no, nothing prevents you from talking to department heads. The dilemma is always how much is too much? And just, and I'm just being honest. There is a problem when my, council members micromanage departments. It's not, it's not your role.
Right.
So you gotta be careful about that. That's why you have a city administrator. Okay, who can, you know...
That would be true if we had committees or not.
It, it could be, but you're asking about how do we meet with departments? And that's just a tricky question, because a, a meeting with councils, a meeting, that's subject to FOIA, but if nothing prevents you from independently getting information, I would just be careful about, you know, how much, how involved you choose to be, which I can't tell you.
For that line?
Yes or no for that. I just, and it's, I've seen it not go well. So just, you need to talk with Tim and, and see how best to get more and better information, more information that you, that you're saying you need.
So, but what I'm saying is for us as a council, to a point, we stay with the same thing, but we, you, let's just say the mayor says, "Okay, you do this, you do this, you do this." In other words, one council member just stays more up to speed on, you know, on these individual, and then come back and we, we report, you know what I mean, during a work session, saying, "Listen, I, this, this is my opinion about what's going on," you know what I mean?
That's a committee of one. I mean, seriously.
It is.
But it's not... I don't think we can do that.
I'm asking the attorney, can, I mean, is, do things like that work? I mean, is it, I mean, that would keep everyone else out of there, you know what I mean? But you would be limiting...
You just kept them saying that you, you wanna be part of everything. And would you wanna be out of it if, if you had a committee of one? If we had one person like Ally dealing with Parks and Rec, that's that committee of one that can come back and you're not in that.
Well, I would trust Ally, but not John, and that's...
But, 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 Mr. Mayor, those, those committee meetings have to be public.
Yes.
So, committee one doesn't accomplish anything.
There's at least the possibility that as you think about this, that you think about something other than control, that you think about knowledge. And that right now, right now, we've got, soon to have seven members. And the question is, would you like everybody to be two miles wide and half an inch deep on what they know? Which sometimes the administrator can feel that's how it is in some cities, not this city. Or would you like to have a committee that doesn't control a department, but really knows exactly what they're doing and what they're facing, and can better direct the administrator to execute council's wishes? That's the best way I would summarize.
Great, great, great way to summarize if, if you chose to go to committees down the road or whenever. That'd be the best way to summarize the event, Johnny.
May, may we revisit this after the election?
That's what I was about to say. I think what you did.
After the election.
Let, let me just...
I don't have any complaints about what's going on with us right now. We've learned, we've had some learning things, but I think we're doing, I think we're doing a lot. And I think we're getting, I think, I have no complaints about anybody. I mean, we've gone through some things that, that we learned from, and we're getting better. We're all being more transparent, for sure, I think. And I think that's what the mayor's trying to do, and I, and I agree with him. We, he's just trying to get all of us to communicate a little better. Am I right or wrong on that?
Right.
And I think we're, I think we've learned lessons, and I think we're doing a better job at that now. I feel like I am. And I'm guilty of being one of the ones that wasn't, so, you know. So anyway, that's just how I feel about it.
But this is right here, this conversation that we're having at the end of this meeting is so fruitful because we're able to really express ourselves and what our vision is for the future. Also, I just wanna put in one other thing. Please don't go to departments and give anybody directives. Tell them you want this, and you want them to do this, or you want them to go here, or, that's not good. Always talk to Tim. And it needs to be done, like, if I was a sole person on council, and I went to Tim and said, "Tim, I want you to do this." He could say, "No, you need to talk to council. I need to have the council directive." We've had that problem in the past, to where we think because we're on council, we over to him, and therefore, he's been split six different ways, and Mandy. If it comes, and we started because we couldn't work together, but now that we've come overcoming that and we can work together, then we have to give directives that come from council, not from individuals. It drive, it like drove Mandy crazy. And I, I, when we was in council before, before we had this council, and I told it, if one person asks for one thing and wants some information from you, Mandy, I want you to give it to everybody. So they know that it's coming, that everybody gets that information. And that's the one thing that I tried to really push. And this right here with committees, it was just another tool to bring forth unity. Because if we can't do it, why do we expect our constituents to do it? We have been so separated for so long. And I just don't think that that's gonna be very productive. We're doing good now, great things are coming, but if they see a little kink in the armor, a little problem, guess what the public doesn't like what we doing gonna do? They're gonna attack. Every little negative that we put out there that comes from us is magnified a thousand times. And it's all about love, in my book, and I love every one of you. And I thank you so much for your commitment. It's gonna be some rough times coming up. We got election coming. And I just hope that you will stand on the truth. Because it's a lot of falseness going out there to make us look as if we doing the wrong thing. Don't be ashamed of the decisions you made, because it's gonna be moving us in a productive way. Thank you all. Now, what's next?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Before we leave that issue, can I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
Sorry. It's my understanding that, that we can, you can appoint special committees that...
Yes, sir.
Even when we're not under a committee?
Yes, sir.
Method? And, and that might solve a problem that we potentially have when there's a particularly complex issue or, or voluminous issue that simply needs two or three to dig into it without really creating a committee approach? And I just think we oughta keep that in mind as something to make use of.
Yes, sir.
'Cause I think one of the reasons for this discussion came up was because there were some of us who were, who were, thought that would be an effective way of getting more detail without dragging everyone else down that rabbit hole that some of us are inclined to go. And I just wanted to, I just thought that, but if we could keep that in mind, when, and you are, I guess that is your prerogative, so I'll leave that with you, but I...
No, I, I wanna get the directive from council. If y'all say, you know, we're getting something that's looking like it's a little sticky and it needs more attention, then you just tell me, "Let's get a committee together," and then I will, and I'll do that. Thank you all so much. Any other, anything else? Any comments?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I have, I, I do wanna just read, come back to an issue on the GeoGraph company? That, when we left it, they were, you know, in a, not able to really use the building downtown that they were, as they anticipated. Where, where does that stand right now?
Did you hear anything?
Yeah, I'd like to know that.
Um, the, basically, the existing, and Jennifer Visage has granted exceptions in the past for having retail spaces, we asked them to. And the question was, would they commit, I think it was a thousand square feet of retail on the ground floor? They did redo their plan to include a thousand square feet of retail frontage on the front. So under the existing exceptions that have been granted before, most recently for the chiropractor's office, they were granted permission to move ahead with doing that retail presence, as council asked them to do. And then the broader questions of what council wants to do moving forward about that requirement in general, and how you wanna do it, that again will be part of that comprehensive plan, part of reviewing that ordinance and designing what specific requirements do you wanna have moving forward.
What about the parking issue? They were gonna maybe buy the car wash, or...
Oh, they didn't have no...
That was discussed in a public meeting and the price went up, so...
So they haven't, they haven't settled the parking issue?
Um, they have not settled the parking issue. But a downtown business typically does not have those parking requirements that we have included. We'll have to look at that. They are committed to not having anybody park on Main Street and finding alternate parking.
Or at least if they do, it's less than two hours at a time.
Correct.
The, the, let me just ask you, 'cause we, a while back, we were talking about reviewing the CBD zoning, you know, in our ordinance. And, and then we didn't do anything. Are we waiting on the, the comprehensive plan to be completed before we come back to that?
That's what I was thinking.
And that, I mean, that will be part of the comprehensive plan, but to council's discretion, if you wanna continue moving forward and diving the depths, if you wanna make a committee to really study what's going on with the Central Business District, because, I mean, questions keep coming up around that. The Griffin Street issue, the parking, everything else.
Well, I just, the only reason I mention is 'cause it was in a packet a while back that we were gonna discuss, I guess revising the CBD, and then it got into revising the entire zoning ordinance. And then it got into rewriting the whole, I don't know what, but...
Usually how things metamorphose.
Yeah, okay, well, I just, I just didn't wanna us to forget that, because it just seems like we need to, we'll need to come back to that. And, and I think it's logical that we wait for the comprehensive plan, and maybe that's in the next session.
Do we know when the comprehensive plan might be presented?
That meeting will be October...
Yeah, October and November.
Second, I believe, yeah.
That's when they're gonna have the...
That is, that is the final public input session, and then thereafter, Jennifer will bring the first draft to council. So it will be in October.
Yeah, so not, okay.
Tim, Mr. Mayor, a question.
Yeah.
Can you give us an update on the teen canteen?
Yes, at two o'clock today, we met over there with the architect who's done the materials that I've shared in the packet previously, and had a, kind of an all-call to some trades and people who would work on roofs and things like that to give some, some hard and fast numbers. And we are working with a firm, Sealy Construction, that will give us a phasing for council that shows what each distinct phase that we've worked with, with the architect. For instance, if we do Phase One, which is we fix the roof, we paint the exterior, and we put a floor in, and you can't really do anything there, but it's stabilized, it'll be X amount. Then the next phase would be you put carpets in, you build out the kitchen. The ne, the third phase might be you make it look pretty on the outside. The fourth phase might be you pave the parking lot. They're going to go through all of those, and then they're also gonna do an additional analysis to say, and you're familiar with this, is if you phase it out, this is what you might commit if you do it each year with what you've got available in capital funds. But if you phase it over five years, what is the factor that you're looking at? Is it additional twenty-five percent? Is it additional thirty percent to phase it? The main thing that we wanna do with the architect, and he understands this works very hard, is we don't wanna double-do any work. So the design has been very concentrated on distinct points, that if you do X work and not any more, you don't have to come back and undo any of that to do the next phase. So we wanna make sure they're all complementary. So what we wanna do is bring back to council, as promised, we're kinda working as the G C on this, the cost details, which we should have probably by our next work session, on what each distinct phase would cost, and then what the cost of phasing it would be. So if we can collapse those phases, that'll give us broad information about where we are. So if we can collapse those phases, that'll give us broad information about where we are.
Tim, we're, we're still limited to the budget number that we have.
That's correct.
Is that correct? So we're not spending more than that?
This is a liquor by the drink for council. We did have a budget number of a hundred thousand dollars. If you decide you want, um, you know, Shirley Temple on top of that, then council can decide that later. We may bring, bring back the results of, none of this is lost because this is property we own that we're gonna want to put into good service. We'll put this up to that existing budget in there. We're gonna bring it back to council with all the information. You can decide whether you want to move ahead, wait a year, wait two years, whatever. It's all in your hands.
So everything's still on the table?
Absolutely.
Even not doing anything?
Well, other than just doing all of this, um, blocking and tackling in the initial discovery.
I mean, I'm talking about like even to the point that it's not feasible to fix and I'm not, uh, just-
Sell it or whatever.
Sell it or whatever. Is that off the table now? Because that's what I'm reading, you're saying.
Fees, no, I'm sorry. I didn't mean to display it that way.
Well, I didn't hear you say anything about that option, so I'm just wondering.
Which option?
Of not doing anything and it's, that's not feasible to fix the building, so I mean, I'm just-
But it is, I wouldn't, because it is feasible.
Well, I thought we were gonna find that out. We, I thought we didn't know that, so that's why we're, we're gonna find that out.
The building's in good shape as far as that goes. The roof's flawless.
Who, who says that? You are the, the-
I thought that's what we decided.
That's engineers and architects.
Well, that's why he went forward and got engineers, because we said-
Well, I understand that.
We're gonna do what we're doing. Um, that it was feasible.
I, I don't evaluate destruction.
Well, I know you don't, and, but I just, I guess I got one step lost somewhere.
Okay.
Because I never knew that. I thought it was still on the table not to do anything. I just thought it was.
We haven't had an engineer look at us and tell us, and tell us how much it's gonna cost to brace it, you know?
That's what we're doing.
That's what we're doing, so that's, so it's not off the table.
Okay.
I mean, if he comes back with, it's not feasible, the floor is destroyed and all the rest, then it, he could come back with, it's,
Okay.
You're gonna have to tear it down and start over.
Well, that's what, that's exactly what I'm talking about, exactly, yeah.
So, we don't know yet.
Yeah.
Well, we, we know at least that that's not gonna be what they're gonna say.
Okay.
As much I hate-
I have one other.
Okay, God.
Go, you go ahead.
No, I'm, I'm skipping that. I've been going all over.
Cameron wasn't finished.
Well, no, I, I was the only other second thing I was gonna ask the previous thing was, um, as far as the Geo thing, back to the Geo.
Mm-hmm.
So is, is that already, is that a, a go? Is there, they're in the process of moving in? Is that what we're saying?
They're in the process of doing their demolition and starting their, um, outfit.
Okay, so I get, that might be another thing that I lost out on too. I didn't realize that we made that decision for them to go ahead and do that.
Well, when, basically, it was the, um, if there's existing precedent, the planning official has that.
Well, I mean, I'm just saying, I just didn't know. I'm not saying I'm right or wrong, I just didn't know, so I'm just, you know, I was-
What are you talking about again?
She'd reported that out.
The-
The Geo, uh-
Geo graph.
I didn't know, they were, that was a done, I guess they're in the process of-
I think it was because they, they agreed, they agreed to the thousand feet-
Yeah.
Um, storefront.
Yeah.
Retail, and so therefore they fell within the, the ordinance.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Oh, okay, alright.
Because before, remember, they wanted a hundred percent office occupation.
Yeah, I remember all that. I mean, I just didn't know that we made the decision that, that gave, I never knew that we gave them the go. Yeah, go ahead, just do, I mean, I, I never got, got to that.
But once they fell within code, I mean, from, within, within the ordinance, they, they had a go.
So if it was, if they were in the ordinance the whole, the whole time, then we would have never known nothing about it then? Is that what you're saying, basically?
True.
Yeah. Yeah, they just bought the property and moved on.
Okay.
The exception was that they wanted to do something different than what, what was precedent, what had been called for was a hundred percent office occupation.
Okay.
I have one other question. I, I don't understand, when are we gonna start, um, adjusting, uh, discussing the contract, you know what I mean, with the developer on this property to where we can know where we're going and they can know, I mean, the contract to me is, is, has not been touched yet, you know? I know we're, we're, I know what we've been doing, you know what I mean, and it, so far it's great, you know what I mean? But I know this is moving ahead and I, I want to know when those discussions are gonna come up. Are they something that you're gonna do, or the attorney's gonna do, or council's gonna do? Are they gonna show up again here to, to discuss it with us as a council in private?
Here's what I know. Daniel has reviewed the, uh, development agreement and I think generally has gone back and forth to some degree on the, um, and probably you can speak for yourself, is satisfied with those terms. The outstanding issues are enumerating the costs and the impact fee, which there, my understanding is, and I don't know if you've got any communication, is that they are still at the point of trying to determine exactly what, the calculation would be for the costs, um, and how to illustrate that because it can't be one number. It needs to be an estimate and a share of responsibility because those numbers can and will change based on time elapsed, actual engineering and problems. So it's basically a share of responsibility for the city and for them. And that's what they are looking at their, um, side of the transaction and trying to see what they want to ask for. And then the only real fight that I'm aware of is we're gonna come back, because we've got all the control we asked for, we've got all the standards.
Yeah.
It's a very mature agreement. It's just those money issues, I think, at this point.
I think that's fair.
Just the money and what, and the, yeah.
So we, we don't have to plum the depths of a long, but we've got the development agreement. We're down at the hard-bitten, we're gonna negotiate over-
But my understanding, they did not, well, I asked and he did not agree with it. He said, well, there was, they're in the contract, but it's not saying we agreed to it, so.
What he said was, we don't know what it will be until we know what it will be. So no, they did not agree to any, they've agreed to everything except for the dollar value, which if you ask them further, they know that it could be more, but they're not going to, it's a negotiation.
Right.
So that's where we are is, and I have asked their attorneys to contact our attorney and to start having those conversations because we're on a clock.
Right.
As far as consideration of this by September eighth and, and I don't know if you have any update on that or if you've heard anything from them.
Other than I have, we, I talked with the fellow's attorney last week. And this is more to do with the water situation, if you're aware of. But there has never been any major red flags raised by the development agreement. Development agreement falls under the Development Agreement Act because of the size of the property and exceeds twenty-five acres, I think that's the minimum limit. And so, you know, there, there's, I, I don't foresee development agreement being a big hurdle to get over. And so, but we will drill down on that and get it in front of this council soon. And again, if, uh, part of the zoning of this property and we have an option to obviously keep it within mandate development agreement, which we intend to do.
And the water issue, in your mind, is not an issue?
I, I don't, I don't think we probably want, um, get into that in the open session here. It might be something we wanted to examine the session, we could talk, talk about.
Right.
But I, I don't, I don't, I wouldn't know how to answer that question anyway.
Right, well, I mean, I think it's been made public, you know what I mean, what you, what, what was said about, I mean, whether or not we could get the water rights and we've made public that, I think Mayor and I and a couple of people have said, we did, you know, unless we get the water rights, we weren't gonna go ahead with this, you know what I mean? So, we want, I just, that's what I'm asking.
We're working on it.
So, yeah. I, I know that, um, I went to a meeting the other night, you know what I mean, at the Higgins County Water Authority and they weren't real. That, that discussion came up.
It's the best that we-
Oh, it was public. So, I don't care. I'm, 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 I was elected to be, you know, on the, you know, so it, it's an issue that I think doesn't need to be just an executive session. I think all these things need to be very public. And I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm just been supporting this action, you know, from the very get-go. I just said that all these things, parameters have to fall in line. And I, and I want to be open about how, how they're open.
This part of the agenda is for council concerns, so, you know, this, this is not an agenda item. I think we should, I don't want to say more than I have.
Okay, the, this is, um, this part for council to discuss or share anything that we want. This, at the end of every, every meeting, there's council comments, so that's why I'm making comments. If you don't feel comfortable in talking, it's okay. But, um, but I know the city's wanting to hear comments, you know what I mean? So, I think we all ought to be as forthright as possible, you know what I mean? So the people, because I mean, I get written all the time and we can only long say, well, we're still working on it, you know what I mean? And I think they just want to hear some answers. I think we, we owe it to them to at least give them that, you know what I mean? You know, I'm very supportive of this and I've said it from the get-go, you know, I just want to make sure that, like, that's why I asked about the, the contract. I keep calling it contract because that, I think that's what the city knows best, but I want to make sure that we're going forward with it. But I, I haven't even known what's going on with it. I don't know. And people ask me and accuse basically that I know as a council member what's going on and I'm hiding it and I'm not. I have no idea what's going on. But I guess discussions have been going on and I trust you, you're our attorney and you're taking care of it, but we, we don't know. So I think you, more information needs to be said, at least that.
When you're dealing, I don't believe, I, I disagree because when you're dealing with legal issues, you can't just be open with the public because it's legal issues. And, and, and we need to get past that hurdle first and then we go, we're not trying to hide anything from anybody, but we gotta let the, uh, attorney do his job.
No, I, I agree, but just to say that, just to tell the public, it's not a legal issue to tell the, you know, the public that our attorney is working on it. That's not a legal issue. That's the fact.
We've already said that.
No, I, I didn't know.
You didn't know he was working?
I did not know, no, I had no idea it was in his hands. When, when has that ever been told?
Did you ever know?
Kinda understood that, yeah.
I mean, I assumed that it was being-
I just assumed it, but I didn't know. So, I mean, council not kept up to date on any of this. We don't know. So we get questioned and we're like, okay, what do we answer? I don't know. Call the mayor? They can't talk to the attorney, so we have to be kept up to date on what's going on, you know what I mean, in this whole process. And that's why I asked and I openly, what is the process? Where are we going with this? We can't just, we don't know and things are being said in public and I have no idea. And I'm, I'm in total support of this, you know, I, I'm not, I, but I think that we had to at least give them an outline. This is where we are in the process and we're working on it very hard. I, I, that is not, that is not confidential information. That's, that's public information.
Okay, um, I understand and we, we thank you for your point. But also, it's been a lot of our information that's been given to the public. And it, and it, and it's a lot of things that's been butchered.
I agree.
And said that we didn't say this and we didn't do this and, and we, 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 a tille the hung. So, information has been given. We've been given information ever since we started this.
The count, the whole council just said we didn't know. We didn't know.
I don't know why you wouldn't know, because if, you know, everything that I would know as a man.
And you didn't, you couldn't have known then unless, you know, you and Tim and the, the mayor or the attorney are talking and, you know, and maybe you did and you didn't think about telling us. But we need to be kept up to date on what's going on, at least the process.
You know everything that I know and, and I've-
I'm not blaming you.
And it was no, it's not that you're blaming me, I'm saying, everything that's been discussed about this and the processes that were going on to lead up to where we at right now have been discussed, as far as I know.
Okay.
Now, really, I tell you what, that was getting late.
I'm getting, I just want to be very transparent and open about this and I think that's what we owe it to the public.
I think we have been.
Yeah, and I, I didn't know.
I, I think we have been. I think we've been more than transparent.
And I, I-
Now, people will say that because they, they try to dictate what needs to be said to them when you're trying to do business. And they elected us to govern.
Right.
And they supposed, has trusted you enough-
Right.
-to make the decisions and govern. But if you start listening to every person that writes you or calls you and you start going back and forth, we will never get anything done.
Who's saying we're doing, going back? I think we're just, I, I think you've, you've taken this out, you're exaggerating this, Mayor. I think, I think it was just a matter of just being outlined for the, for all of it, for all of the council. Mr. Mayor?
We just talked.
Mr. Mayor, I, I'd like to make a motion that we adjourn.
Well, I have a question. I've waited, I've waited this whole time.
Yes.
My gosh.
You don't like it?
No, no, I'm just, we're done. I mean, just, we're not-
Tim, you, I talked to you last week or so, you had a, a class or a thing with the urban housing. Can you give us an update about the, the state program for grants? Remember that you said you had a, you were going to Rennel Tech? How did that go? What, did you, did we learn anything that we could get these people from the South Carolina Grant Program to pick?
I spent very little time in the meeting. The mayor accompanied me. I had a personnel issue that I had to deal with. So, I will have to work on learning more about that on a day when I don't have other issues.
But I got some information I give you. I give, I was gonna give all the council.
Sorry, please.
As far, because we're talking about, um, affordable housing in, in, in the city.
I abandoned the former mayor to sit in the classes and I had to go work the telephone, so.
Okay. I think we're done. I make a motion that we adjourn.
Second.
I'm favored.